It's the recording in progress.
Uh-huh.
They're really true. On a call to order, the town council work session for Tuesday, May fourteenth. We are going to start with planning commission decisions. Anything to discuss related to? Meeting minutes? No? Okay, we'll move on to legislative review. An ordinance approving roof lease for Soul, the Soul Center, first reading.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So as you just said before you, you have first reading for an ordinance approving the town to enter into an agreement with the FERC to lease the roof of the Soul Center for a minimum of ten years. This is a requirement of a grant that we recently got from DOLA for us to put solar panels on their roof, which we have to own for ten years. So happy to take any questions. I know it's a little convoluted and confusing.
Getting that grant, that's exciting. Any questions?
And very creative workaround, nice one.
A lot of meeting of the minds between Shannon and Jesse and I.
Don't tell DOLA.
Goals.
Right.
All right, nothing?
Anything?
Looks good.
Cool, thank you so much.
All right, the density transfer for Vista Verde resolution. Mark?
Good afternoon. Kind of following up on the discussion we had several weeks ago. We are transferring density to account for the density being created at the Vista Verde two site. And it's a pretty large project, as you know, one hundred and seventy-two units. It equals out to, um, once we do all the density calculations, about ninety-eight SFEs, single-family equivalents of density that we need to transfer. And we're proposing to transfer that from the ice arena rodeo grounds lot. And, uh, we have transferred density off of that property before for Vista Verde or Alta Verde one, as well as Uller Flats. So we're quickly using up all the density on the rodeo grounds, about twenty-some units left there, um, which we'll probably be using soon on another project. And, um, then probably next we'll be looking at the F lot where there's one hundred and fifty-some units. I've got a whole spreadsheet that at some point when we have more time, maybe we can go over where all the density is that, um, the town holds.
That's great, thanks, Mark. Any questions?
We're one-to-one now, right?
We're one-to-one, correct. Yeah, I mean, we started out actually way back when you didn't have to provide density for workforce housing. And then it went one to four when we updated the jump. And we went one to two, now we're one-to-one. Yeah.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I'd love to have that be a quick work session sometime, just to kind of understand what's left in the future and yada, yada.
Mark, generally looking at, um, sorry, where are you standing? Did I cut you off?
No, no.
Okay, sorry. Um, looking at the density we do have remaining, is that sufficient for our upcoming housing projects?
Yeah, I believe so. But we'll be using a lot of it or most of it. I think we've got about three hundred and eighty units remaining right now.
Okay.
When did that transition happen where we started using our density for affordable housing?
The two, uh, twenty-eleven joint Upper Blue plan. And it was kind of a recognition by Eric and some others that, yes, we want to provide workforce housing, but there's an impact on the community. And so we need to account for the density.
The most recent one was like, would you say when we went to one-to-one, was that like three years ago, maybe?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it was while I was on council.
Gotcha, cool, thanks.
Anything else?
That is a good discussion that we could have sometime is why are we doing this? What's the right number, one-to-one, one-to-two, you know? What, how far do we all plan out? Yeah, I mean, not now, but you know, work session down the road sometime.
I'd love to look at that, just to be like, hey, are we comfortable with the ratio and the density we've got left? And then what is the, you know, what does town feel like if we change that ratio? And is it, you know, should it be one-to-one or one and a half or?
Right.
I don't know. Thanks.
Sounds good. All right, thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
All right, on to the manager's report, public projects update. Kristen?
Hello. Joined by Kevin. As you can see, we have a lot of projects that started last week. I know Kevin's here to give an update on the turf field. And then we have one question for you regarding the color of the building for the e-delivery center. So let Kevin go with your update.
So if you haven't noticed, the turf ball field project has started. We're happy that it's finally started with decent enough weather. Pretty much all of the fencing is removed on the, um, on the north field. They won't be starting, uh, as outlined in there, it's kind of a four-week, four-week window of just north field work and then a four-week window of, uh, full closure for both fields. And then they'll open the north field and have for approximately four more weeks left for the south field. So, um, it's going really well so far. We, uh, John and I did a pre-con meeting with them on Monday and worked out some details that weren't worked out yet. But it's, they're going, rocking and rolling, so that'll be for the next twelve weeks.
It's great, a lot of excitement around that.
Yeah, I do.
Any questions on this one? Or anything else? But not the color yet. No. All right, do you want to talk about the color next or do you?
I don't have much info on the color. I know that Shannon laid out some options for colors. And so I think she just wanted to get your input on which one you prefer.
Okay, I think there's been a little bit of a discussion about this. Um, it sounds like, um, both gray and brown were the ones that were being considered by, um, some of the staff and council. Um, and I know that here it says that staff would be interested in or suggest brown. Um, I am curious because I talked to several different people who said that gray would also be fine and that really there's probably no, um, matching the site. Um, but I am curious to hear if anybody else has thoughts on this color.
I yield to staff. Every time I pick colors, I hate them afterwards.
What's the interior of the Riverwalk remind me of, I can't, I'm trying to visualize what color that is.
Gray.
It's gray.
Like gray.
And those are the two colors that would just blend?
I think so.
Best?
Yep.
Yeah, I defer to staff on that.
We wanted brown, but that's not available. So it's tan or gray is where we're at, as far as we understand.
Yep.
And staff has split on this as well?
Shannon preferred one, I forget, I think, was it gray? Okay.
And then Kandev preferred the tan?
I'm not sure.
Well, and we had a conversation with Mark and Julia this morning. I don't, my impression was that they were fine, I don't know where they are, fine with, um, either really Julia had said, you know, the brown, which really looks more tan and could be more yellow. We could get a swatch of the, and the actual fabric to see what it would look like. Because that's the one I think some staff, including me, are more nervous about that that, you know, could end up like peach, like the old Riverwalk was. And we don't really want that. So, um, you know, I think if you are all good with having staff make the decision, I think that we can come together and take a look at the two and make a decision.
And just on top of that, something you, you mentioned is that I would be comfortable letting staff handle the decision, but I would request that you have the physical swatches in your hand when you make that decision.
That's fair.
Mark, are you good with that?
I'm good with that.
Okay. All right, that sounds great.
Okay.
Well, you guys make the decision, but based on what you say.
Actual swatches.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Okay.
Anything else?
No. Lot going on.
Yes.
Yeah.
I just mentioned real quickly, I, um, my daughter is doing a signing, uh, athlete signing day today. So I'm going to try to get back for the infant discussion. But if I don't, John is more than capable and he is here and ready to answer questions, so.
Got to go to your athlete signing.
Yep.
That's awesome. Congratulations to you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next up, we've got mobility.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Um, just a couple of updates per section, uh, in your memo. So starting with transit, um, we've learned that in the turnover that we're seeing, uh, we are not unique. Apparently with Alaska kind of opened up again, uh, a lot of transit drivers are heading up there kind of to check off bucket list things to drive buses in Alaska. So we learned that at our, uh, conference last week, our Casta Conference. So, um, we were, we were thinking there was something wrong with us, but it wasn't us. So just so you're aware, we're hoping this is a unique year. Any questions on transit?
Matt, what? I mean, the numbers are great. I mean, we're really seeing a big surge. Is it, what do you, what are we doing right? I mean, what, what do you?
There's a few, there's a few different things.
What are the reasonings so that we can build on?
One of the simple ones is, um, the adjustments that we made with the brown yet route last winter, uh, and the difference between the gold route, because the gold route used to run up to, uh, Beaver Run. This year we changed that to the brown route, so that helped us move that, uh, traffic between the ski resort to the, uh, free ride buses. So that was one of them. And then just kind of some of the changes we've made with, uh, the trolley route that made a big difference this year. Uh, bringing back the purple A and the B together, that made a pretty big difference. We're getting into that time of year where we're kind of looking at how to be most efficient with the, the ridership. So we may have some more changes to recommend, but, um, I think it's just a bunch of small changes have added up, so.
Great job.
Yep, absolutely.
And the cooperation with the ski area went, uh, in, in hindsight, looking back at, uh, this season was a win?
I think fantastic. They, uh, supported us where we needed it. And I think that we, uh, kind of offered a much better, more reliable service to the community, so.
Well, we have, uh, buses up and running for the summer season right now. Like, are we going to have enough, um, vehicles to, to do the routes that we want to do?
So right now, um, as you see in there, we are planning to bring the trolley back on for Memorial Weekend. Um, we just had kind of a tough discussion this morning that we may have to find something to remove after that, um, be it that purple A, B, maybe we make that back to the hybrid that we had a year ago, or we might need to remove the trolley. But we're still, we're still hopeful that we can get some more people onboard. But, um, if we don't have the people, that'll be the linchpin of the whole issue.
Okay. Do you want to talk a little bit about parking?
Yep. One quick thing on the Breck E-Ride, so, um, before we go to parking, um, as of Friday, uh, one hundred and fifteen bikes are out, twenty-five hubs are out. We did want to make note that we added two hubs that are not already accounted for. Most of you probably know about them, uh, one at High Tor Road down by the Loge. Um, that one's been well received. We've heard a lot of positive feedback on that one. And then up at Carter Park as well, so right near the dog park there. Perfect, parking wise, uh.
Real quick, Matt, do we have any of the, um, the sponsored hubs that Teddy brought up a couple of months ago?
We did not have anybody, uh, sign on to any of them. We have talked to a few people about the idea of it and, um, be it the cost or whatever it might have been, uh, nobody bought into it.
Okay.
Any numbers yet on the E-Ride? I know it's been snowing all day.
It's snowed.
Brutal. Anybody ridden one yet?
Yeah, I, I ride it every day. I rode over here, yeah, um, in the rain just now. I, I would say if we're averaging, we're close to fifty rides a day right now, which is pretty good. And then we have those one days where we have zero when it's dumping snow. So I don't have the exact numbers, um, on, on hand right now, but it's close to fifty a day.
Yeah, to me, that's like such a game changer when you look at twenty-five hundred people a day riding the bus, you know, in April. And then you layer in the E-Ride, it's just, yeah, keep up the amazing work. It, it changes the dynamic in town.
Yeah, Teddy's done a great job on that, too. Uh, parking wise, so really it's just a matter of questions. I, I kind of tried to distill down exactly what, what's going on here. Really, it's just a matter of if we're aligned on that pricing structure for the South Gondola lot for the summer, because that is a pretty big variation from what we have tried to do. You know, working closely with the ski resort and kind of being, um, in step with them. This is a little bit of a deviation from that.
And so that's paying hourly and then maxing out at ten dollars?
Correct.
Okay.
Instead of a flat rate of fifteen dollars, right, when you pull into the lot, so.
How do people feel?
And with how you laid it out, would the gondola be the most affordable all-day parking?
So we only charge for five hours, so technically, yes. Um, for the full amount, for the full day, it basically will be the cheapest.
Okay, I think that's something we talked about in the past, having just the gondola being the most affordable all-day choice and making sure we message it. So as long as the pricing structure still makes that true, I think I'm supportive of the recommendation.
And I think the only thing I would add into the whole, you know, spectrum of it is we, we definitely have a different differing strategy here. We want people to park and stay parked for the full day. They also do, but I, I think that they have a different approach of meeting a budget, whereas we want to get people in there to park, so.
And the data showed that people were leaving after two hours and going to Main Street. So fortunately, we had plenty of data to help inform this decision.
I'm a fan of cheaper the better for that spot. I, I feel like the skier of that North Gondola, that's where people are going to park, take the gondola, it's just closer. It captures them first coming into town. And, uh, so this is an improvement and I'm certainly supportive of it. But, uh, you know, I, I'd like to see our parking structure be far better utilized during the summer and think pricing is our best, our most powerful strategy. Because it's, we built it at that end of the lot to be closer to downtown, to the core and, you know, walkable. But, um, yeah, so that, but yeah, nice job getting it here. This, it's moving in the right direction, so. Like to see it keep going.
Yeah, I echo that for sure.
Scott's having the same.
Um, you know, and I, I appreciate, we're, we're trying to change people's habits, right? And that's, that's such a hard thing to do is trying to train people where to go, what the best options are. I think my question to you is, does an hourly, having the hourly option, um, work against us at all? When we're trying to get people to park and stay there, use the, uh, the E-bikes or transportation to get from one side of town to the other and leave their car there? Does having that mental time clock in their head going, well, if we leave now and move, then we'll only owe a dollar fifty versus just, hey, park here, it's ten bucks? And, and I was just curious, um, what your research and thought process on that is?
I don't know that I've formed an actual final thought on that yet, but I think that will be where this kind of comes together. You know, we do see people park on Main Street and pay for six hours up to that, whatever, fifty-some dollars and just pay it. So I don't know if the dollar sign is what the difference is. They want to park for a certain amount of hours, they're going to do it.
Anything else? Okay. I think we like it and we'll see what it does. Thank you. Okay. Sustainability. I love the sustainability. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Um, I just had one quick update to give you beyond what was in the memo. And that is an update on the, uh, restaurant roundtable that we held on Thursday for the, um, e-delivery and logistics. We had four, um, entities attend and then one left because Beaver Run had shown up and they are outside the geographic area and their deliveries will not be impacted by this. So we had a good conversation with them and learned a little bit about how they receive deliveries. Um, but then they left and then we spoke with, um, the other three, uh, the other three businesses. And it was very well received. I think some of the questions that we got were, um, really helpful around what are our KPIs and metrics on how we know if we're succeeding? You know, who are the vendors that we've been talking to? And then how do we scale that up and when we scale that up? So we have, um, so we received some questions, I guess, that we can, uh, add into the FAQs that we didn't have before that will help inform the next one. Um, our next round table is on Thursday. And then we have the full Restaurant Association meeting on June fifth that we're hosting, uh, to talk about the F and B, so.
We're hosting that here, yeah?
Here in council chambers, yep. So I'm happy to take questions on the rest of the memo. It's great.
How were the RSVPs for the tour on Thursday?
Um, I don't know that we got any. The two, sorry, you did?
I filled it out.
Sorry, Teddy is not, um, in the office today. So if you just did, um, yeah, it was, we didn't have any RSVPs for the roundtable either. So we kind of all showed up, not certain if people were going to come or not. So I'll have to check with Teddy on the RSVPs, but we haven't been, they're like six AM. I don't want to go at six. So, but they have an open invitation, so they've said anyone who's in Vail for a hockey tournament or whatever to, to stop in and they'd be happy to show them around as well, so. Good for them. You might be on your own.
Well, I mean, I, we don't need to take their time. Well, if people are just going to show up, I guess they'll do it anyway. I mean, I've already seen it.
Yeah.
I was just going to go to.
We can circle back with you when Ted, Teddy's in charge of the RSVPs. So when he's back, um, we can let you know and make sure it's worth your while.
Yeah.
Um, yeah. Any other questions? Jay?
Hi, Jesse.
Hi.
I'm curious, uh, I had two questions. Uh, one was on two weeks, three weeks ago with the, some notes about, uh, the material management, deactivations of the key cards. At that time, your memo had, we had seventy-five delinquents. And just curious, I just wanted to kind of dive into that just a little bit to understand. Obviously, you guys are out there, you don't want to turn off the keys. But what communication are you getting? Is it a price sensitivity? Is it a civil disobedience? Is it, where are they? What is, and where are we now? Have we shut off keys? And what is going to?
Yes, Hayden's been, uh, Hayden has been shutting off keys. He was not at our staff meeting on Monday, so I didn't get an update for this week, but he's been closing that gap significantly. Um, I think we have one commercial property owner that has, um, multiple tenants. And there's, uh, there's been confusion year over year with that particular, um, group of businesses. I think you get everything from what is this to, like you said, civil disobedience. But I think as soon as they don't have access to those enclosures, it's a realization that like, oh, this is actually part of doing business and we, we need a space for this outlet. But there's not a consistent answer to that. I think everyone kind of has their own. And some of it's on us, some of it, you know, we don't typically bill stuff out. Um, we don't invoice groups, at least in public works like this, a whole lot. And so some of this has been a learning curve on our end where we've had, we've had weird things where there's been like a duplicate payment and we have to go in and change that or we have to merge invoices because of something. So some of it is administrative error a little bit, too. Um, but Hayden just works through those on a case-by-case basis.
And I just want to make sure we're conscious of our small business owners that we're giving them the benefit of the doubt that, and overly communicating, which I'm sure you're doing of going, you know, is this getting, notice getting to the right person? Is the, you know, and just making sure that we don't shut it off like, uh, you know, Comcast would do with your phones or something, right? Like, you know?
Yeah, no, and the, the deadline was for, um, Hayden was going to start shutting off, or it, I think the ordinance reads, or the, excuse me, the, um, the, the rules or the program rules that we've written up have said April first, but he waited two weeks to even start. And he's been just, I mean, yeah.
And then my second was, uh, the July first plastics ordinance is, uh, it's fast approaching.
Ooming.
It is. Just curious, um, have you had further conversations with Kroger, with Seven-Eleven, Lolo Juice? And some of the other businesses that we know that this has been contentious with?
Yep, Seven-Eleven said, send us the ordinance, we'll, we'll get there. We have not gone on a site visit to Seven-Eleven. I have a site visit on June fourth with Kroger. Um, it's just a walkthrough to make sure that they are compliant. They are switching everything over by the end of this month. So, um, they've invited us to come and just say, can you tell us if we're doing it right?
I, I, I was excited for this because when I was in, uh, City Market the other day, I saw like ten different brands of bottled water on end cap, like they're trying to get rid of all of hers.
Yes, they are.
Which is fantastic.
I, I noticed the same thing. So City Market's on the list. I've not circled back with Lolo Juice as of late. Um, I'm not sure what she's decided or how she's approaching this, but we haven't heard, we haven't heard from her in a little bit. So we can make a note to reach back out there. Did you mention another one?
Uh, no, I just think that it's, um, you know, it's kind of fallen off the radar a little bit because, you know, it was a big thing, what, eight, nine, uh, months ago? And now just, uh, with it approaching, I, I know you guys are out there all the time and they put a lot on your shoulders, but to do outrage of going, just reminding, um, you know, our, our stops that this is coming and, um, and that, what the expectation?
Yeah. The, the F and B roundtable was another great time to remind everybody. We've, we've been hitting it a couple of different ways. And then, um, you know, we're also right in the middle of the universal recycling for commercial businesses. And so Hayden and HC3 together have been doing a lot of site visits where HC3 is doing the universal recycling site visit piece. And then Hayden is talking about the plastics piece. So, um, they, they've been pounding pavement for sure. And, uh, yeah, mostly just questions at this point, like, is this, you know, have this one weird product? Is this right? Is this not right? What is ready-to-eat food? How do we define that? So there's a couple of questions still outstanding, but nobody's pitchforking us anymore. You know?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Are we hearing from businesses that great guide that you put together with product alternatives? Are they using that as a reference?
One way or the other on that. Yeah. It's a great guy. Great job. Um, when you guys do the universal recycling, uh, site visits, have you been identifying potential compost areas? Or have we just totally sort of left that? You know, that's a good, it's always part of the conversation, um, how, how, how top of mind it's been with everybody. I, I would say probably with a lot of the property management, but like the condo facilities, it's, it's been less so. One, because the biggest bang for your compost buck is the, the back of house, the clean food streams with the restaurants, right? But, um, but just secondly, everyone was so panicked around just getting recycling in there that compost was sort of, um, but we continue to talk to the businesses downtown in particular about compost. Um, in fact, Hayden just sent out another survey trying to gauge like who's voluntarily doing it right now as we talk through the e-delivery program with compost in mind as well. That's great. I do hope that we can just keep that a little more front of mind because it'd be nice if we can start making a little progress on that. We haven't really paid much attention. We have, we actually have a quote from Timberline to Service Downtown also, which we're kind of weighing.
Both? Beware.
Right.
From somebody who's used them.
A long time ago or recently?
It's been a while, but Summit's doing a great job.
The, um, the guy from Timberline who's been attending those zero waste meetings is really amazing. And I know that he's kind of a more recent, front-facing person. So, anyway. And you'll hear more on C and D, June twenty-fifth. Construction and demolition.
Uh, one last question, um, Uh, one last question. On plastics, who's the point person if we get questions from businesses?
Hayden.
Okay.
Yeah. You can always send them to me too. But Hayden's.
That website helps a lot for food and beverage anyway.
Yeah, but then they have to read it all.
Good point, Carol.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, we don't have a housing packet, but I know you guys had a meeting. Do you have anything, any update? Do you have anything you want to?
I mean, the team is just amazing. We continue to make huge strides. We looked at this morning, kind of the next, what, four years, Lori? But really in the next two years, we're gonna, we're gonna see a lot of units come online. It's, it's, it's great to see years of work come to fruition and you know, I don't know if this is the most in this short a period of time that's come online yet, but it feels like it. But, uh, yeah. Lot of successes.
I would say, you know, we historically average 40 a year. That was kind of the churn. But after we adopted the blueprint in 22 and we upped that number to, you know, 175 a year is kind of the new target. And so, yeah, we are churning.
We're going to exceed that. And just Wellington people, you're going to force us to do a lottery. Period. I mean, it's just the abuses. It's just, it's, it's frustrating. Cause I don't want to do a lottery. I, I love that people, the relationships, but uh, it just is continuing and continuing.
So are we going to reopen that?
Oh, I, I just make a comment so that we can all start thinking about it and, you know, and share it with your neighbors. It's just like, you, you can't sell personal property that you didn't buy.
Or your lawn.
That's what I mean. Or, or you did buy, but you didn't spend extra on it. You know, you just, the abuses is just, they're going to blow it for everybody.
I agree.
What's the latest on block 11 timing for like planning and that sort of?
The runway subdivision for sale? No, I just, I'm.
Let's go struggle.
Or block 11 permits or no. Yeah, the runway, we're going to have a big conversation with the council at your retreat about the status of the runway. So, um, yeah, it's exciting and many aspects of that project are exciting. I think the geothermal is one of the most exciting pieces of that, that we might have the opportunity to do district.
Wow.
System and geothermal, which would reduce utilities huge, but it's in our packet and you will see on the 28th.
And then it would be great if, when we start looking at kind of that, the density bank numbers that, you know, that that matches up, that, that conversion ratio of our existing density bank matches up with kind of the housing expectation that you're kind of requesting to be in the pipeline, if that makes sense. Yeah.
Yeah, we looked at that a little bit at our committee meeting in terms of the projects in the pipeline relative to the density that the town owns or controls. And we included the projects that are short-term pipeline, but there are additional projects in the long-term pipeline that we need to also go and make sure we're accounting for. So I'll, I'll get with Mark.
Thanks. Awesome.
Lori, going back to Dick's point about just abuse in the lottery. And I thought one of the steps we took to try and mitigate that is the allowance for more, I don't know if we called it like maintenance, the painting, the new appliances, all that. Are we seeing people take us up on that?
No, so far only two people in Wellington have updated to the deed restriction that enables you to be eligible for maintenance to recoup your expenses on maintenance. It's, it's right now, it, it's challenging to convince people to opt into the new deed restriction. While they get the maintenance, they lose a lot of the appreciation formula. And you know, with 10% increases in AMI the last couple of years, you know, it's hard for somebody to say, oh, I'll, I'll take your fix two or three percent.
Yeah.
Which is the trade-off.
It didn't used to be a trade-off. It used to be pretty average of three.
Time. I mean, over time, the AMI historically is 3%, but you know, we've had a couple of huge, big increases the last two years. So it makes it a, a difficult time to go out and try to promote opting into this new one.
Yeah. Interesting. All right. Anything else for Lori?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, open space update. Who do we have doing this?
Parker Julia, just the minutes that are there.
Just the minutes? Oh yeah, because we talk again. Okay.
Questions they can come down.
We're okay. Great. Moving on to committee reports. There are a couple in here, summit stage, police advisory, liquor marijuana. No questions? Rec events, John. Waiting, ready.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. The memo sits before you. The one thing that's not written in there that we talked about last month was an update on the sphere. There's not one to give at this time, but Brett Create and the ski resort are at least communicating because they have a conflict with the biggest fundraiser for Brett Create. So Tamara and the ski resort have an open dialogue for that, but no update on the sphere, maybe in two weeks.
I felt like the last time they were talking, it sounded like they were hopeful that it would actually be complimentary. Did it sound like it, that had, they'd changed their minds about that?
Can be some complimentary pieces, but I don't know if Tamara's here, she could speak more to it. But they are, they are communicating. I can't speak any further on that.
Okay. That sounds good. Any questions for John? Nope. Great. Thank you. And HR, Dana. This was a great memo.
Hopefully it's in a familiar format again, so you know what to look for. I think it's, it's still pretty positive in my opinion. We're getting a lot of applicants. And I, you can tell there's a shift in people applying for our positions and it, it just feels like more individuals are interested in applying and working for the town of Breckford. So it's sort of settled down from years past a little bit. And I would also like to highlight our promotions, which, which I think says a lot about people who either start working for us part-time and seasonal, want to stay in full-time positions. And full-time employees like to progress through the positions in our organization and stay. So. They, I will point out, muni services, it looks high, but it's only because they have a small number and they, they lost two individuals, which makes it look high. And police department had some turnover. But otherwise it, it's pretty stable in terms of how many people we are used to seeing leave employment this time of year. And I will say it does pop up in Q2 just because of the time of year. And if you look outside, people decide that, that, you know, they've had enough May, that you can only survive so many Mays.
For warm weather.
Yeah. So it's not uncommon to see people leave after a ski season. Now, we're right around 15.35% overall turnover. And we are still seeing the age category of individuals leaving between 30 and 39. And that is, I was curious why that age group, but I think it's a number of factors, but it also is our biggest population of employees. And so just number wise, keep that in mind too. Not by a lot, but our employees tend to be in that age range. Percentage wise. And our applicant, 652 applicants. And a lot of that is attributed to, we had a successful early season, summer seasonal hiring. So we did a lot of that, but also like I said, the, the recruitment scene is back on track. So I'm encouraged by that. And a lot of promotions, like I mentioned, and the volunteer program, I have, have added that data piece to show that our employees do appreciate that volunteer program and using their volunteer time off to contribute back to the community. And I'm here if you have any questions.
Any questions for Dana? Dana, do you know on that applicants, is it, do you have any data or you see any change in, is it people who already live here who are applying? Or is it people who want to move here who are applying?
That's a great question. It's a little bit of both. I would say our transit employees do come from everywhere and we do hire those individuals typically seasonally first. And then the promotions, you'll see those numbers, our promotions are those transit individuals. Our seasonal positions tend to be individuals that come off of the mountain or other winter employment. And so they already live here. And I would say it, we do have a percentage of individuals that, that move either from the front range or somewhere in Colorado or out of, out of state. Yeah. And our housing, to that point, our housing is very important for, to recruit for those wanting to move to the area. We have a great complement of housing that we can house people for three years in transitional housing. Yeah. Very, very key to our recruitment.
Anything else?
We doing okay backfill on those police spots that we lost the four there?
I have Derek ready to answer some of these questions, but they've got a pipeline in the academy. They seem encouraged with. Yeah. See, he's ready to go. They are looking, he will give, he will paint a positive picture, right?
Question again?
Curious how we're looking on backfill on those four turnover spots from Q1.
Yep. Uh, the four that left, two were for housing, one had a baby from a person in the front range. So they went to work for the Department of Revenue and what's the last one? Housing. Baby. Oh, and a partner didn't want to live here. So.
May.
Yeah. So we already had, he just graduated three. And really, really good individuals, we feel. We have two in the academy. They already are local. That's good for the housing situation part of it. They just started, so it's, it's going well.
That's great.
So it starts to pick back up.
Super. Thank you.
Sounds promising.
Yeah, I like it.
All right. Anything else? Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
And the ADA update. Any questions on this memo or do we have a?
We have your presentation.
You have a little presentation? Great. Come on down.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Do you have any questions on the memo for us?
Just sounds like mostly this is to make sure that we have this information so that we can start working towards compliance, right?
Correct. Yes.
Okay.
I think it'll be prioritization and compliance, because compliance will take years, I suspect.
I would think so.
I think it's great. We're embarking on this.
Yeah. Agreed. Anything, Carol?
No, this is great. And the survey will be coming out soon.
Yes, it'll be coming out soon. It'll be in English and in Spanish. So.
Great. And I'm sure we can mention it at social equity commission and make sure that we amplify it as much as possible.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Important work. Just to add for you guys that you will see, you will start seeing more about this, particularly during budget. As we start having, needing to add to the budget to make these changes. So it is, it is something that we can take a long time, I think about 30 years to fix a lot of the things, but there's a lot of expensive items in that. And so we just wanted to give you an update on it so that you knew what we were doing. You wouldn't be surprised at town party or town cleanup when you saw the survey. And then when it comes to budget time, you won't be surprised either to see some money being added for those kinds of fixes. I think it's great they're coming to town party and town cleanup. I think that's a really good, visible way to gather some more information.
Yeah. Connect with the local community.
Yeah. Okay. I think we're ready to move on to council rules.
Mayor, council, this is a continued conversation from our organizational meeting on April 23rd. In where we did the good governance training and provided the link to the new handbook, which will be complete once we adopt council rules. And so you had the, in that link that I provided, the 2021 version of council rules of procedure. I circulated them again last night, so they're at the top of your inbox. They look dramatically different because I got in there and just couldn't resist reorganizing, reorganizing the document to get it to kind of reconcile with the charter. But substantively, they're not significantly different. There are a few areas that are proposed for some revisions, but also to keep in mind that this is council's document, you can revise however you see fit. I will say that just if you remove mandatory provisions from law, that doesn't mean we can't, don't abide by them still. So we can walk through those. There are citations in both the 2021 version and the proposed version to the areas in the charter or the law, or the state law. But then I created a kind of a list of authorities to go with it that I sent around last night in case that's more reader friendly. I don't know. So with that, I guess the, the other two points I would make is why have a document like this? Most charters, including ours, grants to the council, the ability to create operating procedures. I would guess that most, if not all jurisdictions have some version of a document like this. They, we talked about how Roberts Rules of Order are not really user-friendly to local governments. They're meant for the general assembly. So for one, you need to consider how you want to have parliamentary procedure. We sometimes take for granted, who's the presiding officer? Who's the mayor pro tem? Who, you know, what sort of motions? Do we have to have a motion? Do we have to have majority votes? So those are the primary reason I think you see these sort of documents get adopted. And then the other thing that jurisdictions have added in recent years is decorum. There has been more and more attempts to kind of disrupt council business. So you'll see in times of unrest, what it, a lot of it occurred during police protests and, and some with the existing wars where you'll have members come in and want to disrupt the council business. And so we have a lot of latitude to adopt regulations around how we conduct our business in times of disruption with the caveat that there are also First Amendment protections. So substantively, you'll see a big chunk of this document dedicated to parliamentary procedure and a big chunk of the document dedicated to decorum. Decorum is probably the most significant change from 2021 because we didn't have that component. And there's some other areas that I'm happy to walk through. But with that, mayor, I don't know if you want to take questions first. It might be helpful for people to ask some kind of pressing questions, maybe organizational or law versus discretion. And then I'm happy to walk through, kind of highlight and flag if there's any issues from 2021 substantively.
Just one thing before we move forward, but there's a lot of places in here where you have cited that this is from the charter.
Yes.
And I just want to make sure that everyone's clear on that point, that if it's in the charter, we have to abide by that. That's not something we can modify because it would have to go to a vote of the people. So I just want to make sure that, because you know, there's a lot of things in here that are slightly different than our current practices, but they came directly from the charter. And so you should be doing your best to.
I'd love to hear like what's different than our practices and, and that would be helpful to have a discussion, just so I'm confident. But if it is language in the charter, we can't modify. There is also a significant portion of this that comes directly from state law, open meetings that we can't. One, you know, amending the charter, to your point, requires a vote of the people. There's a bulk of it that kind of fits in the chat like.
Okay. So are there specific questions or I guess you want to start with overall questions? Is that?
I mean, yeah, maybe questions about, is there questions about process? Organization, what I, I'm happy to take those first or we can just kind of do a walkthrough.
So I just had a.
So I just had a clarifying question from, you know, kind of from thirty thousand foot. This existed, but you just reorganized it.
That's right, with some changes.
With, okay.
I will flag.
And you'll let us know what those changes are. So you have put recommendations in versus the previous one?
Yes, uh, I highlighted some of those just now, but yes, I can do a, like a line by line if there was a change.
Okay.
Um, to that point, we did think about a red line, but it became so red because of the reorganization, so. But um, I'm very familiar with what is codified in law and can't be changed versus what.
I think we should start going through the things that are new, maybe. I mean, since the bulk of this is um, operationally what we've been doing, but it'd be good to discuss anything that's been changed.
Could I just make a general comment?
Yeah.
Um, and, and sorry, this may have come up at last meeting that I missed, but um, you know, I, I appreciate this update, um, curious in, in the process. I think it's important. I think we absolutely need to um, capture any new um, state laws around, around open meetings, and I know some of the noticing, electronic noticing and such is is, is been stated that it's coming down the road, so. Um, you know, I think we, we absolutely need to, to be compliant and, and um, and, and consistent with our charter and with state law. But outside of that, um, I really think one of the strengths of small town government and particularly one of the strengths of the town of Breckenridge government has been the ability to, to collaborate with other um, governments, the other towns in Summit County, around the state, collaborate with the state, collaborate with private business, um, ski area developers such, and um, sometimes you need to have a pretty wide box to be able to do that. So I, I just, I, I want, I, I personally hope that we can be very cautious with how dark we're drawing the lines and how close we're drawing them to us. You know, there are laws that we have to follow, but when, when stating those laws in a document like this, I, I think we can narrow the lines a little inadvertently by how we state it, and I think we need to be very careful of that. And we just need to give ourselves, I mean, the extreme case was COVID, and you and I tell you, and I were up here for COVID and you know, there were months where we were meeting, you know, weekly or multiple times a week or even daily for, for a while and and um, quite cumbersome, and Rick and Shannon were working twenty-four seven trying to keep it all going and um, and, and Eric and others tirelessly. So uh, you know, just, just heaven forbid we ever have that again, but um, the flexibility I just think is super important and and really looking at this with the lens of um, just really being concerned with the unintended consequences of, of getting the lines too dark and too close. Um, they gotta be there, I get it. Um, but yeah, so that, that's just my general thoughts as, as we go through, I. Um, so.
Will you pipe up when we hit one of the, or a couple of those?
Yeah, I, I can do some. I don't want it to become a, you know, a, you know, a nitpicking kind of, you know, or, you know, debate. I, I just, the general term, so I think we can all kind of watch. I think we're, this won't be the final part of this process. I think the decorum, um, I, I think we want to think about the decorum and how, how formal we want to make that. And I get it in, in some of the municipalities that there very much needs to be because there's, there are serious problems. Um, we haven't really seen that often. I mean, Kelly, you and I here for the short-term rental thing, you too, Carol, I think, and um, and um, yeah, that was challenging, but I don't think it ever really got out of hand. Um, you know, it was um, so I, I just, a- again, that's another area where, where you know, some of it, it'd be good to state, but um, you know, how, how we enforce it and how we um, put it into our documents. Um, I would encourage us to have tremendous flexibility around the decorum, because that is not defined, you know, in, in the charter or state law. And give ourselves a lot of flexibility to um, you know, to be collaborative and to work with the public. So, but yes, Jay, I've got some notes and, and I'll talk about a, a few of them, but it's not, I, I don't want to go line by line and just challenge everyone. I think we'll all have to kind of look at it with that lens.
Yeah, this is your document, so you tell me, it'd be very helpful if I got specific, um, you know, direction on how to fix it. That's the point of conversation, and you're, you're absolutely right. Decorum is, is a place where you have almost total latitude.
Yeah.
Um, with the exception, I think I pointed out with, like, we have to be careful how we um, the, the First Amendment unfortunately is not black and white like open meetings law is, so there, it's difficult to craft rules that don't have a prior restraint on someone's speech and also that we, on the back end enforce, but aside from that, I just need your input, and you know, if you don't want it in there, we can remove it altogether. That was not in there in the first um, start. So with that, I'll just try to highlight where I think the substantive changes are. Um, I, and I did try to specifically quote any law, um, and you know, on the next iteration, I will make sure that it's a mirror image of the language in the law. Um, although this one is not a change, I will say the first suggested change um, comes on page five at around three point five. I don't have it in here right now because I haven't had a chance to talk to all the staff that would have input on this, but um, the open meetings laws now specifically say that we're supposed to have electronic postings. Um, we are still doing, as I understand it, um, kind of a hard copy posting on town hall, so um, my recommendation is to get us into, into um, line with state law. Uh, to do so, we, there's at least a couple of places in the code that we would have to change. Um, so that's a placeholder for me to have more discussion with staff and, you know, without any objection, I would suggest.
So does the calendar not, is the calendar not adequate? Because it is posted electronically.
Yes, no, it, in, yes, but there's requirements that it be searchable and things like that, and that we just do away with the, the hard copy posting, which I've talked to at least to a couple of people about.
I think people are used to seeing it. I wouldn't do that.
Okay.
Um, I mean, and I don't think, oh, this is an example where I don't think all that needs to be written in. I think what needs to be written in here, this is my opinion, is the law, which says, it needs to go on our website. And I think we put it on our website, that's the simplest thing to do. We put it in here. I think we're all very committed to communicate with the public, so I think the decorum or the unwritten or whatever, you know, yeah, we keep pub, posting outside, we continue, you know, sending the newspapers. I mean, we, we post our meetings in many, many places, but uh,
Fine with me.
Yeah, so to me, I would just require us to do the website. As, because they were pretty, the part you sent me that I read about the website is pretty specific about how to do it in the website.
Yeah, and searchable, it's kind of onerous, but I, again, I haven't had a chance to talk to Helen and.
Yeah, let's, let's talk, engage with Helen and determine that, but I, to me, it's, it's the easiest, the, the less burdensome on staff to do it, yeah.
You're not getting any pushback from me on how you do it.
Uh, same for the mailing list, because that mailing list paragraph is so specific about the town providing written notification.
We have to do that.
We do.
The statute, that, sorry, that is one place where we don't cite it, but um, that was in twenty-twenty-one, it's still in here. I think there's a two-year limitation that I want to make sure we get in there, but that is a requirement. If, if we are requested, we have to do what's called a special notice. And Helen does that, don't you, I.
And so we do maintain a mailing list through the subscription, so that's how we.
Okay, so that fulfills it.
Great.
You know, a mailing list like that could be useful in just us communicating all kinds of things, so we're, I think we're motivated for many reasons to keep a mailing list, but maybe not, maybe it needs to be very specific for this, but that, that's something to work with Helen on. It makes sure that we're very aligned in how it's written in here.
This is exact language from twenty-twenty-one, and I think Helen's been aware of it, so we should be good there. I'll add the, the um, statutory citation to it. Um, okay, so then moving on, the next new thing is um, council agenda. We describe the agenda setting process. Um, which I've asked, you know, the manager's office to weigh in on to make sure that, you know, it aligns with their practice. And then the second area in agenda that um, is, is brand new is under order of business, we've added disclosure of any conflicts pertaining to the agenda, which is very common on agendas, which gives you a place to, you know, then we don't have to modify the agenda or make um, you know, special changes. Uh, the potential for conflicts comes up sometimes with transactions where you might say to yourself, oh, I should bow out of this because it might either have the appearance or direct um, benefit, but it also comes up sometimes with quasi judicial hearings. More often than not, um, I actually watched a lot of meetings, which is kind of a dead statement of my life, but more often than not, the mayor will say disclosure of any contact, conflicts, hearing none, move on. Um, but it gives that space. So with that, do you have any um, feedback on agenda?
I, I'm, I'm for having that as just one additional thing, just a- as you said, it gives us a place to put it, you know, um, to put any conflicts or even just ask the question like, hey, we're discussing food and beverage. I'm in the restaurant, you guys good with this or not, or where we are, and I think that that's uh, that's helpful just to have a placeholder for it, even if it doesn't get utilized all that often.
Yep. Like it.
Fine with that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, okay, so the next significant change was um, electronic participation. Um, this again is completely discretionary for you all, um. The proposal is to narrow it a little bit to make clear that um, we're not as a um, body that has traditionally operated in person um, going to participate electronically just because of convenience. So um, the new language uh, proposes that it's reserved for emergency and health reasons. Um, and there is also a limitation on not attending executive session or quasi judicial hearings electronically. Um, and that has a lot to do with your weighing of evidence, you're taking, well, let's take them in turn. First, quasi judicial hearings, you're um, as kind of a quasi judicial entity in that capacity, you're taking in evidence, weighing the credit, was being credibility of the witnesses. Um, and then in executive session, it can be really difficult because we have an obligation to tape and sometimes we can't hear what's on the tape. Um, and so for those reasons, um, there's a proposal to narrow that. Um, and I, I do think jurisdictions ha- went into a time period in COVID where at least from a legal perspective, it was unknown whether any of these charters permitted remote participation because they certainly uh, weren't, it wasn't written, and now that we're back in person, I think there's at least maybe a weight of the view that um, there's, there's a lot of benefits to being in person. Uh, with that.
Curious, I didn't really have an issue with the top part. What I was not comfortable with, and I don't know if this has been carried over or new, is five point one D. Um, there is a couple of different things in there, one of which contradicts um, rule five in the, in the fact that council members may not attend executive sessions or quasi judicial hearings electronically. And then in D, it says um, council members shall be entitled to vote on all matters coming before council at the meetings. Um, as if such council member was physically present. So I feel like those are a little contradictory.
Okay.
Unless I'm reading that wrong. Um, I also wasn't a huge fan of um, that the mayor or that a council seat or mayor's office becomes vacant upon failure to attend three consecutive regular council meetings. Um, that's seen, that, that is.
Four point eight below is the charter provision. Um, but no, you're making some really good points. So this was, I mean, I don't know how many times you all discussed it here, but I know it was discussed a lot during COVID about if we're, because this charter provision about the three consecutive absences is in almost every municipal charter, some version of it. And so there was a, a fear at the time, like, oh my gosh, if, if we're electronic, are we present? Are, are we losing our seat? So um, that, that is mostly carried over from twenty-twenty-one version, other than some, some revisions to how it's written. But at the time during COVID, when people quickly had to flip the switch and hope that, you know, people these um, remote meetings, remote participation would be upheld in the courts. Um, most jurisdictions made, made it clear that you're considered present for purposes of these charter provisions. There's still no case law on this, but I think everyone's become comfortable that some form of remote participation is still acceptable. Where there are limitations, it tends to be with executive session and quasi judicial, because it was always the view that that was the most risky area. Um, if you were going to see a challenge, but you make a really good point that I need to tweak this language to um, kind of jive with the um, portion about not appearing electronically for executive session and quasi judicial. It's still, even if you're not in those portions of the meeting, if you're in the other portion, you're still absent. I mean, still present, oh my gosh, sorry. Still present, you're still present. You might just be absent from the portion.
Just those two instances where we have that higher standard of law, that's where it wouldn't count. Okay.
But certainly opens input.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable, you know, eliminating executive session and quasi judicial. Um,
Virtually.
Virtual, you know, for emergency situations, or, you know, if someone chose to just be on a trip and they know they're going to be counted absent, but they still want to listen in and participate, I mean, you know, I guess the way, I think the way I read this, but I'm okay with it, is if somebody makes that choice, they could still listen, they may not be able to talk, but they still can listen, because it, you know, it can become cumbersome trying to, to have them talk, but they can still listen in, but they could do that as a citizen too. But I also think there's value in having all council have the ability to listen in on executive. If the council decides not to have participate by talking, I still think they should be able to be online and listen for quasi judicial and executive to, to be able to listen and stay up to speed on those issues.
What about voting?
You know, I, I, I mean, I, I hear, it, it seems like the majority, it seems like we, we want to discourage electronic it with outside of the emergency issues. Um, and if that's the case, then the workaround could be, if it's not an emergency, then you can still listen, but you can't participate and talk. Is a suggestion I would throw up.
One of the concerns I think with the exec session is that also making sure that you are in a place where no one can hear.
Yeah.
Um, and I, you know, I recall a few instances during COVID probably where I'm not sure we were a hundred percent sure that other people couldn't hear the exec session, and so that's a little harder to control as well.
Good point. I don't know how others feel about that. I mean, I, that's a great point, Shannon, and I, and we could just really stress how important that is, or we could just say no, but I guess I would prefer to just really stress how important it is to be somewhere where it's, where the others stand here.
I think you bring up a fantastic point in the emergency situations, and if it was possible. I think you bring up a fantastic point in the emergency situations, and if it was possible, put in a clause in here saying under regular cer- ordinary circumstances, this is the procedure under extraordinary, you know, extraordinary circumstances, they may be modified based on the the needs or of some sort. But I I will disagree with you in the fact that I think the amount of burden that it puts on the staff to make sure that their the virtual is secure, not just with whoever's up there, making sure, but making sure that broadcast is secure. And I'm not a tech wizard by any means, but I I do think that's an onus that can be mitigated by eliminating the virtual, and that is something that can be caught up pretty quickly versus, you know, if you're on for a four hour meeting, you absorb it. If you miss a half hour exec session, you can be caught up pretty easily.
The other piece I think we need to add is to have it be really clear that if another COVID or something like that happened or that we could go entirely virtual very easily without a lot of burden on staff. I didn't see that in there.
I think that
It wasn't clear.
Maybe five point two covers that. That, I mean, it does talk about remote meetings. In emergent, let's see.
Okay.
But so just.
Acquire the them to be in council in.
Well, then it has another exception for emergency circumstances. Maybe the whole thing, electronic participation should have a provision for emergency. I mean, that makes sense to me.
Emergency, or maybe we could just say extraordinary circumstances and and then it wouldn't be quite as.
The other, the other thing is the entire rule document has provision that you guys can suspend it at any time. So that's what's going to happen if you if we're in a state of like
Wildfire.
But yeah, extraordinary circumstances is good.
So just to be clear, because I'm not really sure what we've done here so far, but I think what we decided was that we you can only be, you can only participate remotely if it's an emergency or health reason. And that person would or would not be, I think would not be participating in in a
Executive or quasi judicial.
Yeah.
I guess unless there's, do we want to add the clause unless there's an exception?
I think I think it might be good to do that. I was trying to think of if there's been even a single executive session that, you know, would be so important that one of the people on council could. But I guess, you know, in theory, they could, there could be some time that we were like, ah, Dick has to be here for this. He has the most historic knowledge or something. So I kind of do feel like if we have an exception like that, that you can just plan on if you're remote, you're not going to participate unless there's an extraordinary circumstance that you need to for the executive session.
Yeah, you know, you you all to explain, don't need some sort of rigid confinement. You're all, you're all going to do the right thing. So I.
Okay.
This is minor, but on line forty one, they're just a gendered term, just him. Can we make that?
Oh. This is from. You know what? I have no issues. Yeah, but we can fix that in my view because we have, yeah, there's a way to fix that. I tried to take it out of anything that was a charter. Yes.
So quaint. All right. I think we can go on to the next edit.
Yes. Nothing in parliamentary procedure has changed. And let me make sure. That is one area, though, aside from six point two and six point six, where, you know, like a six point one, there there is some room to change parliamentary procedure. I don't think you need to. I think our procedures are working just fine, but just to be clear about, you know, where you have the most latitude to change things. The procedure tends to be one of those areas. We did make a change, proposed revision to proclamations, I think is the only area in the parliamentary procedure where we modified to bring kind of more in conformance with what I've observed as your practice, that, you know, any of you can bring forward a proclamation, not just the mayor. And that is six ten C. It used to be limited to the mayor.
I just want to go back to six point seven for a second. It's reconsideration.
Sure.
And this is really just based on experience and really from Eric's point of view when he was mayor. He really had a conversation with each of us when we came on that was, once we've made a decision whether you you know, whether you were supportive in the council chamber, which, no matter which side you were on of the issue. Once we have voted on something, it's really something we all get behind and support. I thought this reconsideration language was interesting because it feels a little bit contrary to that with like, it's like somebody from the winning side can bring this up again at the following council meeting. And I don't think that's a really great, I don't think this should be the way we handle something that we want to reconsider. I think, you know, maybe having some a further future discussion with Shannon or with myself. If you feel like we really need to revisit something is appropriate, but it's my strong preference that people wouldn't wait two weeks while staff has moved forward on whatever decision we made two weeks ago and then bring it back up. So I just would love for everybody to read through six point seven and make sure that we don't follow it.
Yeah.
Is that we just don't make it so formal, like, let's just.
Or is it even necessary?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know. I don't know. Does this come from the charter?
Example, what I was talking about before, I don't think that's necessary.
Okay, if this isn't from the charter, then I don't agree with that. And how do other people feel about that reconsideration?
I would be in agreement with you. Just out of curiosity, if there was a instance where new information became available after we voted, how would that be handled in a reconsideration? Would Shannon bring that forward and go and, so you guys voted, you know, seven zero on this two weeks ago, we have since learned X, Y, and Z. Is that permitted or how does that?
Yeah, and we've had that happen.
We have.
And we've had it where, you know, like, three days after a council meeting, something like that has happened, and either Shannon's brought it up to us or a council member has made sure that staff knows.
Also speaks to not having it in here.
Yeah.
Because then we.
It just seems, yeah, formal in the wrong sort of. Yeah, we should, any new information, we should always be reconsidering. Absolutely. It, that's not what we're trying to get around. It's the waiting two weeks and bringing it up formally at the council table is what I'm really thinking we can do better than that.
Yeah, I agree. I think Eric's approach there on, hey, we're united as we proceed is a really great way to operate. And yeah, reconsideration kind of seems against that. Yeah, undermines it for sure.
Yeah, okay. So if we can strike that.
Yeah, I have no issues, although just make sure that we're not missing something you're making. And because we do have time, we're going to talk again at the retreat on some of the decorum stuff and then not bring this back till later. So we'll make sure that we, there's no unintended consequence. Okay, so then any anyone else have anything in the parliamentary procedure they want to talk about before?
Didn't you have something else?
I was on proclamation.
Okay.
And so if there's no other discussion to be had on parliamentary procedure, I'm done with that section.
Great.
Okay, so then rules seven and rule eight are not significantly different, but I tried to make them a lot more clear. And so when we do, a lot of times you'll hear public comment and public hearings, the terms are used interchangeably. But from a legal perspective, there are significant, you know, constraints around a required public hearing that are not the same restraints around public comment. So I made, let's see, three different sections. One to address public hearings that are required by law. Typically, those will be your call up hearings and sometimes a site specific rezoning. When you have to apply specific criteria to your decision, that is typically a quasi judicial hearing. Those are the required public hearings. You also have had a practice of doing courtesy public hearings. You do courtesy public hearings on the first reading of your ordinances. That's not required by law, but we have codified the continued practice of that. And then we, I've discussed a little bit with the mayor, this idea that you could have a courtesy public hearing on an agenda item if you're hearing from community members that, you know, something is controversial or it needs more work, you could open up that agenda item to a courtesy public hearing. And I do think it's just really important that we are making it clear that that's voluntary. You know, it doesn't mean we have to apply certain criteria, but it gives another opportunity for the community members to be heard. And then following that is how we will conduct any hearing and the hearing procedures. And I'm happy to come back and talk about each one of these, but just to give the full picture. And then the third category is public comment. That is not required at all. There are some jurisdictions that don't do it. Some do it at the end of the night. Most jurisdictions have some form of public comment because, you know, that's a good opportunity to hear from the community. I think we made one, we did make one, I guess you could call it a substantive language change, but this is where often you have this limit of time for the public comment. And a lot of times those members of the community have questions. And so how do we deal with that? Our practice has been, and I tried to codify it here, that we want to make sure that we let the manager kind of triage after the public comment is instead of during comment to determine, is it a council member that follows up? Is it staff that follows up? Just to make sure it's not something we aren't already working on and that we answer correctly rather than trying to do that in the moment. So that is a change at eight point one D. And that's just kind of an overall of that section. I'm happy to take any questions on how that's handled. Or input. This this is an area other than the retired public hearings.
And do you have any thoughts on eight point one D? And if that's the proper way to move forward on public comments, that it should be, that the onus should be on you?
Yes.
Do you think it needs to be in there?
You know, I I think it actually is probably pretty helpful because it gives council some cover for not answering questions from the dais.
Well, I think the policy is a great policy, but does it need to be in written form in this document?
I think it's fine to have it in there. I I think you could go either way on it. But again, if, you know, it does give you a little bit of, you can say, right, it's our, it's our practice, our policy, part of our rules that we don't answer questions. And we can say that to folks too, that this is why council didn't answer your question and why staff is taking it on. So I maybe would leave it in there.
Okay.
And Helen and Shannon and I met with Kirsten on these two sections. So we tried to kind of bet, you know, what is working most, everything felt like it was right. I mean, adding that second public or the, you know, initial public hearing. It felt like we definitely wanted to gather information earlier, not wait. So I think we discussed many of these points and agree with them. So.
Great.
Does anyone else have questions on my hearing section? Okay. Okay, so the most, I think, I would say that decorum is probably the most significant. Some of that is carried over from prior two thousand and twenty one version, but overall, it's it's a pretty significant add on. Just to make sure, I mean, I would say that while I certainly want to allow you the most flexibility, I also have been part of situations where you you weren't prepared. And in the heat of the moment, without words on the paper, it can be really difficult to know what do we do if someone's, you know, Zoom bombing with something during our business. It's it is very difficult in the heat of the moment to remember what is okay and what's not. So aside from that, it does not have to be in there. It can be modified. This is yours to decide. And I do, I mean, I do think it's, you'll find it in, you'll find some version of this.
I think it's good. Are others fine with it?
Yes.
Great.
Well, with that, then I I do want to point out just what can be really valuable is from a first amendment perspective, is it's often if you get someone disruptive in the chambers, the reaction is to have them removed. And there's been a lot of lessons learned on, we got to give a lot of warnings and it has to be carefully dealt with. So that kind of falls under the enforcement of the decorum.
So Kirsten, just what Kirsten and I talked about is that if someone is at the dais and is, you know, spewing hate speech annoyingly, that's their right. But we don't have to stay. So I could just interrupt the speaker and say, you can have your three minutes, but we're not going to stay and listen. And we could all leave out the back and people could get up and leave, or we could all just stay. I think it will obviously depend on how it feels in the moment. But just to give you guys a heads up that if that that's one of our options.
Thank you. That's I think the only other new provisions are just adding our reasonable accommodation language. I I I think that, no, I'm sorry, the accommodation language was in there. I've added it to a new, I've moved it. And I did want to talk to Helen and team about, you know, we've got a lot of people now dedicated to the issue of ABD, and maybe we do want to have a contact person or a contact number or something like that. And then anti discrimination, anti harassment, those are common, you know, provisions that we, of course, adhere to. And then just to give a place for our legislative policy, which we've decided, you know, we might want to revisit and talk about the scope of that, but not, don't have time for that today. But incorporating it in here so that we have a place for it. So. And that is it on new.
Any other questions or concerns? Okay, so the next steps would be.
So I think the next steps, where you all are having at your retreat a discussion on operating and norms and that really kind of fit within this context of decorum. And so we Uh, and so we thought have that conversation. Maybe there's something that comes out of there that you either want to modify from this existing proposed version or add to it. And then after that, um, if you all collectively feel ready to move towards adoption, this is just adopted by a resolution one reading. Um, and then it will be embedded in that council member handbook. Each board and commission has their own version of a document like this. And so that will be the one place for all the, the repository will be this handbook, um, which we're waiting to finalize until the rules are completed. Um, if we need another conversation for some reason, we can do that. Otherwise it would be the meeting after the retreat, which I think is June 11th, you know? Or proposed resolution two.
All right. Sounds good. Um, anything else on this topic? Shannon, anything? Okay, I'm gonna propose we have a break.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you again, Mayor Council. Um, this agenda item is an overview of our sustainability programs and a, a brief recap of where we are at today. Um, after we adopted the Sustainable Breck Plan back in 2022. Um, please feel free to stop me at any point, but I'm just going to go through a couple of slides here that talk a little bit about the focus areas and then some example programs that we've been working on or highlight some accomplishments we've had since then. I won't go into the background of Sustainable Breck. That was all laid out in your memo. Um, the history, um, starting back in 2011 through our 2017 renewable energy goals. Um, the Mountain Towns, um, climate summit in 2019, which really spurred a lot of our net zero work. And then of course, our Sustainable Breck Plan update that we did in 2022. Um, the plan was also, um, contained in your packet. Um, happy to answer any questions on that too, but I think the slide deck will get us most of the way there. Um, so for new council members, just slide it. Okay. Oh, there we go. Um, this is our team. So, um, this position started with just me back in 2018, but since then we've grown into the mobility space. Um, with Teddy, you see there, he runs primarily the electrification programs and the Breck e-Ride, for example. Um, and he's also spearheading the e-delivery and logistics program from our team. Um, Hayden is also there. He does our materials management. So any trash, recycling, compost. He does town facilities, the material management fee. Um, and then works a lot very closely with High Country Conservation Center on their work. And then of course, we have Joey who splits his time between, um, the transit team and sustainability. Um, and he really supports us on the admin side and makes sure we, um, have food at our meetings and pay our bills on time and all those good things. So, and of course, you know Matt. He's not even listening. Um, I just wanted to highlight one of the things that we really, um, pride ourselves on in sustainability. And that is the co-benefits of all the, the things that we, um, are doing for the town. So it's not just about the environmental aspect, but about all of these other co-benefits. Um, primarily around livability and environmental health. Um, we see a lot of cost savings in the work that we do over time. Um, we're really working towards resilience, um, for our community. So there's a lot of crossover. Um, and you see that outlined in the plan. The original Sustainable Breck Plan contained things like housing and childcare as well. And it's for these reasons because it really crosses over a lot of the, um, what are traditionally siloed, honestly. Um, so the Sustainable Breck Plan has five focus areas. Um, and I'll just go through each focus area and highlight the goals. The goals are really overarching and very visionary. Within the plan, it contains specific targets and milestones and then strategies, which is the, the day-to-day work that we are working on. Um, so these goals are very, um, aspirational. And they also don't contain a lot of detail because the detail comes, you know, within those target areas. So for, for energy, um, our goals are to increase our renewable energy and then also reduce natural gas and gasoline fuel consumption. So that speaks a lot to the built environment as well as transportation. Some of the work that we've been doing in this space over the last few years are in partnership with housing. Um, we have built our first, uh, net zero onsite, um, facilities. Vista Verde one, Vista Verde two. We're also using this approach at Stables. We've done the same at Uller Flats. And runway might look a little different, um, in terms of the systems that are used, but the goal is still to, um, produce as much energy onsite, um, as those facilities are consuming. Um, another thing to note is that we did not run any natural gas to these sites, so that they are fully electric buildings. And all of the electricity is produced by solar panels that are either on the roof, carports, or at, at Vista Verde two will be also some ground mount solar. Um, yeah, so those are some of the, uh, net zero projects. We're also pursuing, um, as you know, we're doing solar on the tennis center right now. And then we also have, um, six other facilities that already have either rooftop solar or ground mount solar. That have been around for a little over 10 years, actually. So related to water, our goals are to reduce potable water demand as well as reduce peak summer water demand. The summer season, um, you know, we've really identified outdoor water use, uh, irrigation in particular, um, as that peak summer water demand. So, um, this is a space where sustainability works closely with the water department. You guys did the unified watering schedule not that long ago. We're starting to push out information about that right now. Um, but there's a lot of partnership, uh, here between the parks department and other facilities to try and make sure that, you know, we are, um, doing what we hope the entire community is doing. Um, you heard an update on the turf replacement at the Kingdom Ballfields that the rec center is doing. We're also, um, transitioning all of our, uh, facilities onto smart meters so that we understand the amount of outdoor irrigation that we're using for the town and we can adjust accordingly. Um, we're also exploring a grant right now to help us do some turf replacement out at the Rotary Park, which is, um, by the ice rink there. Um, and we're looking to do some, you know, removing some of the, the, uh, the grass along the median there and replacing it with native vegetation. So those are a couple of examples of things that we're doing for water. The smart meter project is not a cheap one, so it's, it's, it's slow to, uh, we're, we're in the middle of doing it right now. Materials management, this has been a passion of council for a long time. And it's also one of the hardest, um, places to focus because we don't have total control over where our stuff goes. So this is a lot of partnership with the county, with the Summit County Resource Allocation Park. You hear us, um, you know, everyone else refers to it as the dump or the landfill, but we try to, um, try to honor that it's a material recovery facility. We do other stuff there too, like recycle and compost. Um, but our goal is to reduce waste at the source. Um, so, you know, not having waste that we have to recycle to begin with and then what we have left to recycle, um, and compost that. Um, these two initiatives, we talked a little bit about the plastic piece, uh, earlier in the conversation tonight. Um, also the small bin for the win marketing you see on the right is related to the pay as you throw and universal recycling. Those were two major steps towards, um, achieving our materials management goals. Others, as you mentioned, Mayor, the composting, um, across the community. We've, we've supported the Strong Future Initiative with the county and trying to advise them on new recycling programs. It's helped us put in glass depots and food scrap depots across the community as well. And now we're working on construction and demolition waste, which we know from a 2019 waste audit that we did, um, with the Summit County Resource Allocation Park, that 30% of our waste comes from construction and demolition. So it's a huge component, um, to achieving our goals. And you guys are going to hear a little bit more about those recommendations next month. Climate action has a lot of overlap with energy, but in this case, we're really focused on greenhouse gas emissions. And so that's not just energy from buildings, but also our EV transition. Um, as you know, we have battery electric buses. Um, we are starting to transition some of our, uh, what we call white fleet vehicles, passenger vehicles, um, into, uh, electric vehicles. And we also provide electric vehicle charging stations for the community at multiple, um, different locations. Uh, let's see, those are listed right here. So you can see before anyone ever parked in the South Gondola Garage, what it looked like. Um, but we have over 20 ports in the South Gondola parking garage. Um, similarly, we have, uh, eat at the ice rink, two at Town Hall. I'm going to get the numbers all, all wonky, but the rec center, Public Works and the community center, which, um, that one is not owned by us, but we did partner with Excel Energy to bring a fast charger to the community there. Um, and so those are all operational and, and some of those are actually wired to easily add more in the future. So as demand grows, we can, um, fairly easily expand that as well. Um, so that's a little bit about transportation electrification. And then finally, we have mobility and the goal here is to reduce vehicle trips and congestion. Um, you heard a little bit about the Breck e-Ride before. Todd, you made some great comments about kind of connecting that last mile with the transit and it's really had a major impact. We know from survey data last year that 58% of the Breck e-Ride trips replaced a car trip. Um, and so it's a very specific question. You know, some people might take it out for a joyride or just to cruise around town, but we really wanted to know if you use this, did you replace a car trip in town? And 58% of respondents said that they did. Um, and new this year, you did hear some updates, but we have, we will be fully deployed at 125 bikes soon. Um, we have, uh, partnered with Drop Mobility. They bought an e-trike, which will be cruising around town servicing the bikes and doing battery swaps. And we also have an electric, uh, transit van to help rebalance, um, the program. For us, it was really important that the vehicles that support this were not adding to the greenhouse gas emission issue. Um, and so Drop has been really, um, great in, in partnering with us and helping us achieve those goals. And so those are just some of the examples related to the Sustainable Breck Plan. I know I, I did not include in the packet, but I did send via email yesterday, uh, a roadmap that kind of showed the green, yellow and red. status of some of our, of our strategies. And I just wanted to offer up this time, if you guys had any questions about that document or where we're at with any of the things that I just mentioned here today. But this was just intended to kind of bring you up to speed and remind you of what you're, we're doing and and hopefully make sure we're still on track with your vision for sustainability in Breckenridge. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you. How about some questions?
Jesse, you're in this every day and, you know, passionate about it. Where do you see maybe like the top place where we're selling and the top place that we're not performing? The hope that we were doing?
So in, in saying this, I don't, I'm, you know, not knocking any of the resources we've put towards anything, but I do see a lot of opportunity on water. Right now, we're busy running a water utility. We've done a lot of infrastructure work. You know, those guys are out there keeping hydrants running and main lines from leaking, right? But where I think there's a lot of opportunity is to have somebody looking at the programmatic aspect of that and helping you know, promote, whether it's the unified watering schedule that you guys just passed or helping people replace their meters or identifying leaks. Like, we do some of that, but we're busy running a utility. And so I think that that's one of the challenges where, you know, the, the staff I have today, we, we're not water experts. And so a lot of opportunity there. I think where we've slowed down a little bit, unfortunately, is approaching our, and we knew this was going to happen. We really were kind of gobbling up every last renewable resource we had early on. And now we've kind of run into that point where the grid has to modernize, we're working with Excel, Excel's trying to catch up on things. There's been a lot of legislation lately that has changed the landscape. And so I think it's just not happening as fast as we want it to, but it's happening. And our, and we've really put a stake in the ground and we've driven a lot of other communities to want to be doing the same thing. And I think another space is just in, in and around natural gas. You know, we put some incentives in the code to try and get new developments to electrify. Last I checked with ComDev, it hasn't, not a lot of people have been using those points. Remp has certainly made people think twice, for sure. We have a lot of interesting success stories around that already. But, but new construction, like going all electric, right? And, and we do see the size of those homes being a challenge to fully electrifying, because the cost, it, if you don't put solar or offset with renewables, your electricity costs more than natural gas. And so when you just look at, you know, the pro forma of your building, like you want to put natural gas in because it's cheaper. So those are just a few of the spaces. And then materials are always, they're always so hard. Messaging, are you talking to the right people? Do they care? Do they have resources available? So that's just an ongoing. It's our, it's our call to arms, recycling.
People who are taking the time to do their best they can on recycling. Are they doing it good enough with, as far as contamination and at the recycling centers at home? Are we, is it, are there results? Are the people that are trying, that you've reached, that, you know, the town has reached, that Brooke and Helen have? Are they able, is it sustainable results of that? Yes, what's in their recycle container is being recycled? Or is it what's in the recycling container is going to the landfill because it's too?
Oh, that, that's a good question. We haven't, we haven't asked that lately since full implementation of pay-as-you throw has, has been in effect. So we'll have, we'll have 2023 data here soon. And we'll be able to tell, you know, did our policies drive, drive change? Now, it was only Breckenridge, we were hoping to have other communities also participating in these policies. And so are we, are we a drop in the bucket? Or are we having, you know, a bigger impact? The numbers will tell. We do know that contamination has kind of stayed steady. It hasn't gotten worse, it hasn't gotten better. So that's both a success story and a room for improvement story. We hover between 15 and 30%. At 30%, it's getting trashed. At 15%, they're working with who, you know, who are your customers? Where is this load coming from kind of thing? And we have seen success with the Oops Tag Program, which is primarily done by HC3. It's supported through a grant program that we've supported them in the past. And we have seen results at the curb from that.
I'm going to just follow up on Jay's question a little bit. So he asked for like successes and maybe we were not doing great. What would you say is the place where like the lowest hanging fruit for biggest bang for our buck? Like if we could make one change, and you may not know until you see that 2023 result, but is there one place where you're like, oh, just a little more work? This would be gangbusters.
Well, I'll, I'll go back to like a common way of explaining biggest bang for your buck. Greenhouse gas emissions are where we can have our biggest impact. It costs a little bit more. Sometimes a lot more, but it costs more to do that, but it's definitely a bigger bang for our buck. The, and renewables right now, under the Inflation Reduction Act, are actually paying back even, even faster than they were. So the investment in renewables is still there, but we run into these I'll call them utility barriers, for lack of a better word. Recycling is the gateway, right? So for somebody who typically does not care about this, or greenhouse gas emissions don't resonate with them, or they're just not sure where to start. Recycling is a place for them to like start. And so we put a lot of time and effort into recycling because it's visual. It's this, if, if we don't do it, we have these piles of trash and bears getting, you know, it's just like visually something that people can really wrap their heads around. And so it's a much lower cost to do that. But in terms of biggest impact, like they, we're not getting at greenhouse gas emissions. We're not changing climate change through recycle. We are, but it's a real drop in the bucket compared to the stuff we can do around greenhouse gas emissions.
So is there like one project where you're like, oh, this would be, this would be my next choice to make the biggest? You don't have to answer to it.
Yeah, I was going to say, can I get back to you on that one? I'd have to think about that.
Maybe along that same line is at the back of the Sustainability Plan, there's that implementation roadmap. And this was passed in 2022, it's 2024. And there was a short time horizon for a bunch of projects. I was curious if sometime soon you could bring a kind of an update on all those short-term projects. What's been completed, what we're completing this year, what you need from us to be able to complete some of those short-term projects?
Sure. Yeah, I think some of, a little bit of that without the, what do we need to move forward is kind of contained in the green, yellow, red, like status update. Again, some of that, like a lot of the red is kind of in the water to, I don't mean the water department, but it's around water as a focus area, because we just don't have, again, that program, those programmatic resources for that. But yes, we can, we can kind of think tank a little bit, like what do we need to kickstart some of those shorter term projects?
That'd be cool.
We kind of leapfrogged some of them.
Yeah, I noticed in here. The 2027 goal.
Yeah, and I think for me, it's all awesome work. I love it. Would love to have the opportunity to kind of review what to invest in, right? We also love if you've got like, you know, it's been a couple of years since this was put together. Like if there's additions to that, they're like, hey, we should add this kind of in as like a little modification. Would love to see anything that is hitting your radar, just because you're living and breathing this stuff.
Great.
Thanks.
All right. Anything else for Jesse? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's fun to have that update.
Yeah, I've been looking forward to giving them.
We're happy to have you here. All right, next up is Cucumber Gulch Trail Discussion. Mark's going to lead us.
Helen's pulling up a map. Trail map? Yeah, so for a number of months, BOSAC has been discussing trails through Cucumber Gulch and Tote Alley in particular, which you'd see kind of in the, in the yellow there. Anyway, we had a, a meeting of the minds, if you will, on April 22nd, where we brought in our environmental consultants, Ecometrics, along with Colorado Parks and Wildlife experts to answer a number of questions that both staff had, BOSAC had, and more importantly, even the community had. And we had a number of residents. We basically had the, the conference room back here, full, full of folks, packed. It was a really good discussion. And at the end of it, BOSAC went into their regular meeting and made a recommendation regarding trails. So what had been floated earlier was the idea of, should we keep that trail from going to the north, the upper part of the screen there? And possibly do what option two is there, which is the kind of reddish colored trail that ends up up on Ski Hill Road, near, kind of across from where, just below one Ski Hill Place. Obviously, there's some things about that that weren't very attractive in terms of where it ended. And there are certainly desire by some of the residents in that to continue to have that access up to the Peaks Trail, which the entire trail does. So an option three was conceived, which actually allowed for that continued access, but it avoided some of the most some of the sensitive wetland areas, especially up at the upper part of there. And so we had a discussion, a robust discussion. And at the end of that, the BOSAC then in their regular meeting made a recommendation on this. And that included that they liked the idea of going with option three. Also, on the trail in general, removing barriers to water movement. So getting rid of turnpikes, which are on the ground, kind of those gravel log lined areas, getting, getting rid of anything like that that's inhibiting water flow. And then option three also avoids some of those most important wetland areas up higher on the, near the Peaks Trail. Secondly, we would continue to honor the seasonal trail access. So until, what is it? I think it's like the Monday after 4th of July every year. I'm sorry?
It's just the sixth.
It's just the sixth every year. Thanks, Scott. July 6th, every year, we, we reopen the trail, but until then, it's closed, much like the Gondola is closed now. To take into consideration caving for unglits, moose, etc. We also, there was a discussion that as part of this, we needed to then make sure we do reconstruct those areas to keep them out of the wetlands that we continue to monitor the quality of the fen wetlands in that area. And make sure that the water quality is being preserved to the extent possible, along with wildlife habitat, maintaining those values as well. So we will continue to do the monitoring we have done over previous years regarding that. There was a suggestion about looking at snow compaction issues as, as it relates to inhibiting the growth of willows up in that area, because the Nordic Center does run groomers up along that existing alignment. And then finally, a discussion about continuing to increase the presence of our naturalists that are up there, just reaching out and informing folks about educating them on use in the gulch and to avoid where we've got parties of more than eight, which are technically not allowed in the gulch, we want to keep eight or less people in a group going through the gulch. And also to keep them off of the trail during the closure period prior to July 6th. So those were the recommendations from the BOSAC. And at this point, I'm glad to answer any questions. But also would look for council to provide some input. And then if you agree to, with the recommendations, we wouldn't move forward to construct the trail later this summer, the realignment.
Thanks for that summary.
Quick question.
Yeah.
That's cool. So for option three there, does that kind of top part of the, if we call it like a clock, does that top part go away? And then does that get kind of put back to like the natural existence?
Yeah, it, it, it goes away for summer use, Todd. Winter use would probably still be maintained there.
Okay.
Because it's already corridor wide enough for a grooming machine. And what we don't want to do is make the realignment that wide, because, you know, you need like 16, 18 feet width to put a grooming machine through.
Yeah, thanks for the clarity there. Appreciate it.
Do you want to add anything?
Sure. Mark did a fantastic job. There's just a couple of the notes that I kind of wanted to reiterate for us to consider when, when looking at this. One of which is being that this was not taken, this discussion was not taken easily. Like this has been a year plus decision and looking at all the data and tons of discussion and to the point of where BOSAC got to, got to a point where the, a decision needed to be made, or at least a recommendation. And that the last thing they wanted was for council to get the impression that they just picked, yeah, option three looks good. Like there was a ton of thought that went into this. And some of the, the additional footnotes to recommending option three was that we have trail consolidation, where that there is clear entrances and exits out of this, and that we don't have little spurs or social trails that are super damaging to the environment, the ecosystem up there. True entrances that we really consider minimization, which was, I, I, I found this to be quite remarkable, but given the makeup of the commission. But there was a unanimous recommendation to not allow bikes on Tote Alley and to make it pedestrian only in the fact that it is seen as being a little bit more aggressive, having to tread through, through that area. And to, to have that be a pedestrian only way. To narrowing the hours, you know, we, we know that dawn and dusk are the most impactful times on the, on the ecosystem there. And so to kind of narrow those hours a little bit, to open up the trail a little bit later, close it a little bit earlier. And in, and Mark touched on this with the naturalists, but in, in other words, increase enforcement and have people there that are able to educate our guests and to allow for, you know, for their, it to be more than just signage. One of the, one of the other things that came out of the discussion with Ecometrics and CPW is that this isn't a set it and forget it. All right, we're approving option three. I guess we don't have to look that, at that again. It's something where we do have regular assessments. And if there, i- if a certain red line gets crossed, that we, we will probably necessitate going with more of an option two or abandoning the trail access into Cucumber Gulch. And as part of that, it's, it came across as sort of inevitable that at some point, we may be looking at that, we're going to probably be looking at that. And in anticipation is to start looking at where we might be able to have some observation points from the perimeter of Cucumber Gulch to allow for the appreciation of the preserve. And to start kind of that planning process now, so we're not way behind when and if that, that comes, that comes across. And then I guess the most, the thing that hit me the hardest in this is, is communication and how we, where we guide our guests. This is a trail where it is super family friendly. This is a trail where it is super uh family friendly in the fact that you can take the gondola up and walk downhill back to where you started and not have an up and down. This is uh tends to be a big recommendation from some of our welcome centers and our businesses of going, oh, you have family, go up to cucumber gulch, you know, it's super, you know, you pick the free gondola up and then you can walk down. Where I think w- we should be focused on having some other options that are, that provide that uh experience and the amenity of being a little bit easier on families.
Interesting. So in regards to both the bikes and a, you know, kind of establishing next steps as, like you said, a certain red line gets crossed. I'm just curious, uh, I feel like um from the discussion that I've heard, maybe there were a lot of questions from BOSAC to the naturalists that weren't really able to be answered. And so I'm curious if we can get um maybe a wildlife biologist involved who could help establish some of the, get answers to questions like, what wildlife species are we impacting when we continue the trail through the other section? And what is the red line we should establish that would trigger, you know, additional measures, right? Because I wasn't clear, um, it seems like from the notes that the bike um decision hasn't been made, but that people do want to talk about maybe that being the next step. I don't know if that's true, but I think we should, regardless of what the actual decision was, I do think that we could um get a wildlife biologist involved for that discussion. Because the Ecometrics people are awesome and have done great work for us, but they are hydrologists and like, I think they're vegetation ecologists type.
Yeah, Jess is a wildlife biologist also.
Okay.
Yeah. But but yes, we could bring someone else in too. But I'd agree, um, I think there was a couple of people that talked about bikes, but I don't believe it was a unanimous decision by the BOSAC.
Maybe just the discussion.
The minutes make it look like it was three that wanted to look at it in the near future.
Eliminating them?
Yep.
Kelly?
Yep.
Yeah. All right. Good summary. Lot of information.
It was, it was a great discussion.
Definitely agree with you that it was not taken lightly.
It was what?
Not taken lightly. Um, any questions for Mark or Jay? How do people feel about BOSAC's recommendation?
If you want.
Go for it.
Um, yeah, it was whoever recorded it, thank you. I thought that was a, yeah, it was a pretty awesome meeting to get, you know, the community involved and to get lots of folks from staff and these experts as well as council members. And, you know, I thought Steve did an amazing job kind of navigating that and getting the discussion going. Um, and and quite frankly, keeping it on track to, hey, what's what's going on here? I am a huge fan of of what I would call incremental improvement. And I think this, you know, proposal has a ton of that. Um, so I I think it's a great progression. And, you know, I really liked what you said there about like, it's not a hard line, like, hey, this is what we're doing and then we're done. But that, you know, so to me, like, this gets some really good things going in the very short term, right? So, you know, kind of option three there kind of cleans that zone up a little bit. If we work on some other parts of the trail there to get more water flow, I think from hydrology perspective, like, yeah, that's good stuff. I chatted with Duke a little bit, um, and he was saying that for him, this data layer was really important. Um, and so I don't know with, tied into what you're talking about with um wildlife biologists and maybe al- also on that, you know, for the species side and then also on the hydrology side, if there's a way to kind of get some data points out there about defining what is, where does it become a concern? I really like, and Mika, you've talked about this a couple of times that we've chatted about kind of this idea of management and enforcement. And, you know, I like the idea of having rangers out there. I like the idea of, yeah, having the bike discussion. Maybe there shouldn't be bikes in there. I, you know, I bike a ton and I'd be totally down with shutting that down to, if that's good for that habitat, great. I worry about the future development on the admin lot and the loading on the numbers there, right? And so I, yeah, I think we want to be open to and have kind of continued, whether it's annual or every other year, discussions on how are we doing with enforcement? What sort of numbers are defined success there? Do we want to ratchet down numbers that are allowed to 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 visit the gulch? And if so, like, how do we do that? Do we want to change the timelines on which, where, you know, we shrink or expand those? I would imagine shrink would probably be the direction we'd go if we're seeing negative impacts. But I think this is a great start. I think I'd love to see, you know, a regular drumbeat to assessing how we're doing there, because it is kind of this, it's in a super important zone of value. I'd love to do a site visit when, like with this group and staff split up into groups of less than eight, right? Or six or whatever it is, um, so that we kind of have the context for it. And then, yeah, I like the ideas of, you know, can you experience the gulch kind of above? And, you know, one of the things I had heard is there's, you know, if if you're going from, say, option two up and around to peak seven, that, like, getting trail connectivity there, if we did opt to come out of, you know, the kind of the heart of the gulch down the road, like, do we want to make that investment? Is that important for that habitat? So I think, yeah, I think we get this out as a start and then maybe spend some time this year working on you know, improvement down the road. So, yeah, I think it was awesome work.
Well put. I think you summarized everything really nicely. Is there anything new besides that to add? And how do people feel about option, going with option three?
Hey, just one question from what you brought up. The dawn to dusk, is that something we're considering enforcing more during the summer? That hours daily versus just that seasonal closure, is that what I understood from you?
Believe that.
We don't have that right now. Yeah.
That was just talked about as an idea. Okay.
You got to try to prevent activities during the most sensitive times. And of course, those dawn and dusk times move based on something.
Yeah.
Just kind of like, gondola is run, runs the way it does and has its kinds of operations.
Yeah. But, yeah, like you said, Kelly, that there's tremendous amount of work put into this. The, I think, BOSAC worked hard, staff worked hard, everything laid out here. I'm supportive of what what Jay said, Todd said it, so don't need to repeat.
Mika?
Uh, I am supportive of option three and staff's recommendation. I think one thing just to point out, there was a lot of talk about snow compaction at that community meeting. Um, if you're not familiar with this trail, I'm not even going to try to do east and west. Booker's left of the long yellow line is actually where the groomer runs. The groomer, for the most part, does not run on this trail. There there are some sections where it does, but there is a separate ski trail that was, I believe, designed specifically to avoid the sensitive areas. So so this is a snowshoe foot trail in the winter for the most part, and then a foot trail and bike trail in the summer.
Yeah, and I think that goes back to Todd's point about just incremental. There'll be with just removing these different areas that are really hydrologically blocking the flow.
I think where features comes to money.
Features. We need to get rid of those features. All right, so um support for option three. Thank BOSAC for all their hard work on that. Tons of um brain hours and thank you and your team and Anne, of course, who's moved on, but ushered this to.
Thanks, we appreciate it.
And would you all like us to schedule a site visit?
I mean, I did the site visit with BOSAC last year, but I'm happy if everybody else wants to either. Do you want to do it before or after or?
Before, after what?
The upgrades.
I think it'd be neat to maybe do both, you know, and I know our time's limited, but like, yeah, maybe before, just to give us context and then we, you know, we can go out on our own to see it afterwards. But I think, you know, this is a space where I think it's valuable for us to spend maybe a bit of time on it. And it's beautiful to get up there and check it out. So, yeah, I think before the upgrades would be nice.
With some of the experts.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
There we, I mean, many, we've probably all been up there, but, you know, to be able to do it, do a site visit with some experts would be great.
Okay, there you go. Thank you, Mark.
Thanks.
Um, infant care discussion, John. And I do, you guys, I want to be mindful of time. We can slide the community leadership award nomination to after planning matters. But, or I mean, yeah, after the planning commission interviews. But hopefully, we can be pretty close to on time for those interview in a little ten or fifteen minutes. Does that sound all right?
Sounds great.
Um, good evening, mayor and council. Thank you for um having the opportunity to talk about, you know, we've we've talked about infant childcare um a lot in the last um decade, you know, plus. So us as the recreation department um decided to, in in essence, look at a pilot study if we could provide infant childcare. You know, Jay, when you always report back to um, you know, advisory committee, it's infant is the biggest need, infant toddler is what we need. So we um reached out to licensing the county health inspector um as well as a local contractor to see what it would take to convert an existing space within the Breckonage Recreation Center to provide up to four, maybe five spaces of infant childcare for town of Breckonage employees first, commission members, uh, committee members, and then town of Breckonage residents. After that, we would make sure that it was, it was full. The memo that I provided outlines the certain costs. It looks to be about a hundred, a hundred and seven thousand dollar subsidy a year to provide those four spaces. That could be eight children, nine children, um, but it's four spa, four children daily um within that childcare center. It is also about a fifty thousand dollar capital investment to convert the existing space to make sure it is up compliant with licensing um for an infant childcare center. What questions do you have as it pertains to that?
All right, so they're looking at if we um would like to move forward with this recommendation. And so let's talk about um concerns or questions in moving forward and potentially moving forward with this. Do you have something, Carol?
Um, just a high level question, John. I think you laid it out well. Um, it also meets the critical need of infant care in this community. But are we approaching it really as a recruiting tool? Is that one of the main objectives?
Would not say it's the main objective, but it's definitely a part of it, you know? I think Dana talked about how housing is critical to our recruitment tool for town of Breckonage employees, offering someone a space in infant daycare, you know, to take that stress away from someone who's about to have, you know, a child that gets them in, they're like, okay, at least I'm set until eighteen months old. Definitely would not hurt our recruitment process.
Mika?
I love this. I think it looks great. My only concern is about ratios, like with only two, for only budgeted for those two staff members, if they both get sick, if someone, you know, if if we, if we have a hiccup in in that ratio number, I know that like stops, stops everything for the day or the week or whatever. So I, that's my only concern is, do we have enough staff to pull this off?
Um, yeah, so I appreciate your institutional knowledge um of the recreation department. Welcome to town council. Definitely, uh, in speaking with Laura Cronin, who is, who is our county um current uh state licensing auditor expert, we believe that we could train additional staff you um to fill those bathroom breaks, to fill those sicknesses. You know, we understand there may be interruptions, but we think with two staff members along with our current organizational structure that we have, that we can more than accommodate. And we will, we would take the April week break that all the existing childcare centers, I'm sure we'd be off in the Fourth of July. But none of that has been, you know, flushed out in detail um in terms of that. But I I understand your concern, but I I I do not think that would be a problem um with our, with our structures. Kind of the next, next person is up to help in those situations.
Todd, you have anything?
Educate me on the zone that you're going to be swapping out.
So if you walk in um to the old spin studio, which is now the children's playground, to the left, we have our youth coordinator office space. Just beyond that, um, was the previous barely big uh space that has not been brought back. It's been repurposed. It it's serving a a great um for our older, like ten, eleven, twelve year old children and a lot of our specialty programs, the science programs, um, that we'd have to find a new space for them. So it's combining those two spaces just off the playground to to create that infant room. So it's, I think it's about a little under five hundred square feet um that is in there.
Great. And if this is a home run, where do you expand to next?
We don't have time to go down that.
I, you kind of answered my question, was how do you integrate, integrate with your current childcare staff and facilities and everything else, but it sounds like you're thinking about that already. So I just like, that would be important.
Yeah, I mean, just so you understand, we go to eighteen months and then we start at five.
Right.
With our current si- situation. So there, there is that gap. I want you all to understand.
I'm thinking more facility and staff, yeah, crossover and such, so.
Yeah, um, I I feel confident in that.
I really appreciate you thinking this way and seeing a a need in the community and seeing what what you can do on your part and from the recreation. I I have some concerns. One of which you just alluded to, that where do I be taking infants and then sending them out at eighteen months? And there will be no place for them to go. You know, and I think that that is concerning in that we'll have preschool availability once they get up to that, you know, four, three, four year old um point. But from, you know, a year and a half to three to to four, there's still this giant gap that we, the families won't have kind of a feeder program or any place to go at that point. I do worry about the coverage for the childcare coordinator if they need to, if they want to take a vacation other than that spring break week. I think other childcare facilities have to bring in like kind of a childcare director, someone with those qualifications to be in the facility. And then, you know, and I I semantics, but um, you know, in here you have that the true cost is a hundred and seven thousand dollars per year. And I I really think that the the true cost is, is actually the hundred and seventy seven. And I would even challenge that number uh when you look at the wear and tear. Yes, we don't have to, you're not having to pay rent, you're not uh considering electric costs or any of the fixed costs that the rec center absorbs. Or even like the, you know, the other ongoing, but you think about all the, you know, the cribs, the mattresses, the the carpet, everything like that. I just think that this is so micro um that the fixed costs overshadow the benefit and that perhaps that money would be uh better used to kind of answer Todd's last question or last question that what, where do we go? How do we use this as a pilot program that can be expanded on? Uh, whether it's with incentivizing at home um child cares where we can get a bunch of them going or uh reinvesting into our existing childcare facilities.
Sorry.
I don't know if there are really answers right now. I think um, I agree with Jay and everyone up here that um this was or is an a very innovative way to look at things. And I'm so grateful that we have staff that are willing to say like, how can we chip in? You know, we have five hundred square feet, not even, broken into two areas. Like, maybe we can make it into something. And I definitely think there's potential um with this project specifically. But I do, just being aware of all the other things that are sort of in the mix right now, like maybe Breck Montessori coming online to widen their um accepting age will take care of this gap. But I feel like I'd like to have some of those, that information and data before we necessarily pull the trigger on this. I think the, you know, it's um a fairly, it, you know, a hundred thousand dollars or a hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars a year might not seem like a ton, but I think over a ten year period, it kind of strikes me that that's actually a pretty big investment. And so I just want to make sure that this room is going to work um as an extra room and and lead to something. I mean, I know, I think you had a ton of good points about like, well, I mean, I know, I think you had a ton of good points about like, well, if you're in this care and you're on the waitlist someplace, then hopefully that gives you enough time to get into that place. And I think there is a lot of potential with, um, looking at um, with, you know, just starting the program up and seeing if it works. I mean, it's not a huge capital outlay anyway for fifty thousand dollars for the rooms. But I do, I would be very interested in just seeing how the timberline expansion, how the Montessori changes. If there are, you know, we did that room study for all of the facilities to have an additional room, like where should we be spending this money? I would just like to sort of put those questions to bed before we move forward. I don't know if there's council support for that, or if, I know that this is, um, you know, a long, we know about this waitlist issue.
Mm-hmm.
Um, for a long time. And so it's hard to just pump the brakes. Um, but I guess that's what I would prefer to do. I don't know how.
Quickly, Jay, I want, I want to share your concerns. And I talked with Catherine Shaffet ECO. And the waitlist problem doesn't end at eighteen months. I mean, it, it's almost a little bit more. So that is the biggest concern of this. I always laugh. I think it was a town council meeting, Leslie Davis was like, congratulations. My parents didn't even know we were pregnant with our first child. Like that's how, how this goes, um, for, for families up here. It does, it gives you a two-year head start and it gives you that sense that you have care, at least in that situation. But it does not solve everything that we're looking for. And I don't know if we have that. We, we obviously do not have that solution. Um, but unless, as we build out the childcare center of the rec center, but there are these other centers that this is what they do. Um, you know, this is, this is there. Um, so this is just an, an option in a, in a pilot program that we, you know, we looked at. I, I looked at this pretty extensively pre-COVID for older children, and I ran into so many licensing re- like roadblocks. Infants was easier because they just don't need as much space. They don't need as much outside space. They don't need a door that, that goes around. And then I just, you know, we kept hearing infant, infant, infant is the biggest problem. I was like, oh, maybe we could, um, help that case. So.
Thank you for your work on it. And thanks for spending the time.
So we have a meeting, I think it's next Wednesday, um, with the directors of the four facilities in Breck. And, um, if John doesn't have the invite, he'll be getting the invite. Um, so that we can sit down and have a conversation with that group around what they're seeing for a need. Um, and try to come up with, you know, we, the TLC expansion is already in the works. I mean, it's not under construction yet, but the process is, is engaged and we're, you know, we probably should already have bids for, um, Montessori as well. So those things are, they're starting and we're talking to Little Red. And so, you know, to Kelly's point, it will give us an opportunity to get those folks at the table and try to come up with what makes sense for a plan going forward. And there's a lot, there is a lot in flux right now. Um, from just the simple issue of the school district pulling pre-K kids away from the centers, which changes the dynamic as far as the funding is concerned. And, you know, at some point, we're probably going to have to look at that. Just, you know, to having so many childcare facilities in Breck and not as many in the other communities. And, and what does that look like for those communities? Um, you know, particularly Silverthorn that's growing. So there's a lot of different moving parts to this one. Um, but we'll have that meeting next week with those folks. I don't know that we'll have a plan coming out of that. We may need a little time to come up with something to bring back to you, but, but we'll come back with some additional options. Or some additional ideas for you all to respond to.
Well, thanks a lot for all the work on it. I think it has a lot of potential and I hope it does. We'll find a way to bridge that gap and move it forward.
Thanks.
Thanks, John.
Yeah.
All right. So Shannon, is it fine if we do the community leadership afterwards and then we can move on to planning commission interviews? So if you guys, um, can pull up those interview questions. Julia, send them out, emails. How many do we usually?
I feel like three.
Three? Yeah.
I've never seen Beal to find them, so I print.
I was just gonna give you a, I was gonna give you a pass. Marika, you want to ask one? Ask, sorry. I don't know. I don't need to know, but I guess we should for, for a go. You gonna ask one?
Well, no, if it'd be nice for the everyone else.
Hey, Bob. Oh, just, okay.
Signing on interview question.
No, that's fine. Do you want me to step out?
No, you're fine. So, Marika, which number are you gonna? Jay?
Uh, five.
And Dick?
I'll do six.
Okay, great. Keely, thank you for coming. Do you want to just introduce yourself?
Sure. Uh, my name is Keely Ambrose. Um, I have been in Summit County for about thirteen years. I, do you want me to like?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Um, I previously worked for Summit County Government for the past thirteen years. I was the assistant county attorney and then the deputy county attorney. Um, I worked in close, uh, proximity to the board of county commissioners. I advised the board of county commissioners, um, on mostly land use issues. I also, um, advised the, all of the planning commissions. Um, as you probably all know, the county has five, which might be excessive. I don't know. It was a lot. Uh, but I, uh, I worked closely, I advised the planning department on all, uh, planning and zoning matters in the county. Um, worked closely with all of the county's partners, including the town of Breckenridge. So many of you, most of you, I, I know at least, um, tangentially. And, uh, yeah, I thoroughly enjoyed it. And I just recently took the opportunity to take a different job in the private sector. I'm actually still doing, um, land use related work. So I am the corporate counsel for entitlements for a company called Tract. That is, um, working to develop data centers around the country. Um, and I am in charge of their entitlements, basically. So I'm, um, advising their planners as they go through the planning process, um, in various communities around the country. So just to completely round out my, my resume, I thought, I saw the opening for the, the planning commission for the town of Breckenridge. And I mean, it's more than that. Really, uh, leaving the county was a really hard decision for me. And, um, I really wanted to stay involved in the community as much as I could. And this seemed like a pretty natural fit and something that I could really lend, you know, all of my expertise and knowledge to, to help the, the town, um, on the planning commission and help carry out the vision of the town council.
Thank you. Marika?
Um, I think you've addressed a little bit of this question, but do you have experience serving on other boards? And/or have you attended any planning commission or other town meetings?
So I have actually, now I was just saying, I've never actually attended a town planning commission or town council meeting, which is a little embarrassing, but I think I just had plenty of it at the county. I was like, I don't need to do that. That's covered. Other people have that. Um, so that, uh, that is actually something I'm really looking forward to. Obviously, I've attended innumerable, uh, board of county commissioners and planning commission meetings in my role at the county. And now in my, my new role, I am attending uh, planning commission and town council meetings for other jurisdictions, jurisdictions around the country.
Thanks.
Hi, Keely.
Hi.
Um, our planning commission meets on the first and third Tuesday of each month. Um, usually we start at five thirty, generally lasts about four or five, sometimes six hours long. Um, and the packets are really long. They're, you know, a hundred to two hundred pages. Do you have the time to commit to that large of a commitment?
Yes, I think I do. Um, I have a pretty high capacity for reading. That's, you know. It's usually one thing a lawyer is good at. Um, so, um, yeah, I, I can commit to that. There may be occasions. I do have to travel for my current job. There may be occasions that I am out of town. Um, but I would hopefully be able to, you know, I'm not sure what your policy is on, um, remote participation by planning commissioners, but I would be able to, you know, hopefully if I, if I were, did happen to be out of town, be able to participate that way.
Thank you. Hi, Keely. Thanks for, uh, applying. I appreciate it. Um, any, any ties to the development community that could be perceived as a conflict of interest? Or any other conflicts?
Yeah, no. So one of the, one of the beauties of my current job is that it, no one's ever going to develop a data center in Summit County. I, uh, so I, that's not an issue. I think, you know, my previous job, uh, working for the county, there, you know, would be some sort of perceived conflict. Um, if I had tried to be part of the planning commission, um, while I was still working for the county, but I'm not doing that anymore. Um, and I don't really see that. I don't have any other ties to the development community that would be a conflict.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. That's our, that's all of our questions for you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Um, we have your application and your letter of interest, and they were both great. And, um, they, like Dick said, thank you very much for applying.
Now, you know, I'm just here to help. So you guys pick whoever you, you know, want to, uh, want to put on the, on the, on the commission. And, uh, I'm sure it won't be the last, obviously, of you in one capacity or another.
You're a strong applicant. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Make a decision tonight and someone will be in touch tomorrow.
Okay, great. Thanks.
I have a, I have a potential conflict of interest with Anne Bradford. I've used her as a decorator on the Hearthstone. So I've had a business relationship with her for a few years. Only if, I don't know if you guys perceive that.
To disclose that. That would have been so helpful.
Yes. Well, that's on the regular agenda. So I, I just wanted to throw that out and see if you guys feel like that's a conflict or not.
I don't see it as a conflict. Okay.
Okay.
Thanks for disclosing. Hi, Anne, welcome.
Hi.
Thank you so much for your application.
Thank you.
Will you just introduce yourself and tell us a little bit?
Sure. Um, so my name is Anne Bradford and I am a, um, Colorado native. I grew up in Denver and have been up in Summit County for, um, since two thousand and three. Um, and I have a interior design business. I went to CSU, um, and studied interior design and, um, have been doing interior design, um, for thirty years now around the county and all over the state. And, um, I've been in Breckenridge for the last eleven years. Um, and, um, I don't know what this format was like, um.
We have some questions.
Okay, good. Cause, um, yeah. I'm not just a public speaker. I get very embarrassed, but.
You're doing great.
Thank you.
Hi, Anne.
Hi.
Um, do you have any experience serving on other boards and/or have you attended any planning commission or other town meetings?
Um, I've attended a planning commission meeting, um, not a lot. Um, and as far as boards, I am not, I have not. Um, I am, you know, um, have raised kids here and, um, an active member in the hockey, um, team. Just being a parent, um, manager.
That's a ton of work. Yes. That's, everyone here would agree with that. And thank you so much for applying. Uh, I had a question to you about time commitment. Uh, planning commission is, uh, a long thankless job for the most part, uh, volunteer positions. Uh, we, that's right. Uh, we meet the first and third of ever, or, I think, we.
They.
Yeah, they meet the first and third of, uh, every month, first and third Tuesday of every month.
Right.
And the meetings are pretty long from start at five thirty. They can go until nine, sometimes ten o'clock, depending on the issue.
Okay.
Uh, there's additional trainings that you'll be encouraged to, uh, participate in as well as the, the packets that you receive. Uh, the Thursday before the meeting can be upwards of two hundred pages long.
Okay.
Do you have the time and bandwidth to commit to such a daunting, uh, workload?
Good question. Um, I feel like I do. Um, I'm at a place where I, my kids are getting older. I have a junior and I have a freshman in, in college this year. And so, um, yeah, I think between the kids getting up, you know, going to school and just, I will have more time and I'm definitely, um, driven to learn more about all the codes and, and happy to do it. Yeah, I have the time and that's kind of, I was looking for somewhere to be involved in the community. And as an interior designer and having a background and reading plans and, um, underskin, understanding scale and all of that. I felt like this might be a good, a good fit.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Sure.
Hi, Anne. Thanks, thanks for applying. Appreciate it. It's great to see you. Um, do you have any, um, ties to the development community that could be perceived as a conflict of interest?
Um, I do not think so. Not that I'm aware of.
Any other conflicts that you can think of? Okay.
Um, no, not that I can think of. Um, we're business, we're homeowners and business owners, but I, um, I can't imagine anything. I think we're, you know, we love Breckenridge and we just want to support it and, um,
Great.
Part of it, so.
Thank you so much for applying. That's all the questions that we have for you, but we will, um, I didn't listen when you said, when are we going to tell them?
Make a decision tonight and someone will get back to you tomorrow.
That I was gonna say.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Anne.
You have two more chances.
Yeah. Oh, my gosh. Just keep all the oranges coming, Carol. Is this next person James or Eric? James? Hi, James.
How's it going?
Welcome. Thanks so much for applying for planning commission.
Thank you for having me.
Can you just, um, introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about who you are?
Sure. Um, I'm James. I've lived here in Breckenridge for twelve years. Um, I've worked at BGV for twelve years. Um, I live in the Lincoln Park neighborhood. Um, I have two kids. I have a five-year-old daughter, Gemma. I have a two-year-old son, Charlie. Um, I'm a mediocre T-ball coach. Um, I, uh, I've, uh, served the last four years on the, uh, on the Carriage House, uh, Board of Directors, um, and President as the last couple of years. Um, I just love living in this community and, uh, love getting opportunities like this.
Awesome. Thanks for doing that.
Yeah.
Thanks, James. So you've, you've answered the first part of our question, but in case you think of something else you want to add. Do you have experience serving on other boards and have you attended any planning commission or other town meetings?
Sure. Um, well, I think I just, uh, gave you the board that I've served on, so that answers that question. Um, I have not attended a, um, town of Breck council meeting in person, but I have watched probably twenty-five plus from my house. Um, and I have not attended a, uh, planning commission meeting.
Hi, James.
Jay.
Thank you so much for applying and I appreciate all your service, uh, thus far. Um, our planning commission meetings meet on the first and third of every two, or first and third Tuesday of every month. Um, start at five thirty PM. They usually last three, four hours. They can last longer. Uh, we have that there's some volunteer trainings to do throughout the year as well as the packets that you receive the Thursday before each meetings can be upwards of two hundred pages. Do you have the bandwidth and the time to commit to, uh, such a arduous position?
Really good, uh, good question, Jay. And, and the, I think the best way that I would, I would answer that is that I definitely talked to my wife at length about this commitment, um, even bef-, uh, you know, outside of the training and outside of the, uh, the preparation, um, just the meetings by themselves. Is this something that we can do? Uh, on top of everything else that we have going on while raising a young family and, uh, you know, I'm a hundred percent go. So absolutely. Yeah.
Wise man. Wel- welcome. You bet. Thanks. And thanks for applying. Really appreciate it. Um, and you've already answered part of this possibly, but, uh, do you have any ties to the development community that might be perceived as a conflict of interest?
I mean, I work for Breckenridge Grand Vacations. Um, I don't view that as a, uh, I don't view that as a conflict of interest, but I could understand that some people may.
Okay. A- any other conflicts that you could have?
Not that I can think of.
Great.
All right. Thanks, James. That's all we have for you.
Thanks, Kelly.
We're gonna make a decision tonight at our night meeting and then staff will go ahead and let you know, or you can, um, listen to the meeting and then you'll know.
It's good. I really appreciate everybody. Have a great night.
Am I going rogue or?
Yeah. The ante, that was, uh.
Is that not okay? I'm just gonna minimize what I said last one. Hi, Eric. Thanks so much for. Thanks so much for coming and applying.
Thank you for having me.
Introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about who you are.
Sure. So my name is Eric Dahman. Um, third generation Colorado home builder, developer, real estate broker. And, uh, moved up here in two thousand and five with the family and raised them here in Breckenridge. Both my kids are Breckenridge Elementary School graduates. We live over, uh, kinda near the Breckenridge Elementary School now. Um, these days I'm full-time selling real estate with Breckenridge Associates Real Estate. And now that the kids are grown and out of the house, this was a, I think a good time for me to finally start giving back, right? I've been in this community for a long time. I actually love the small-town charm of it and, uh, the community itself is really what, is what, uh, I think makes this space, this place special. So, um, really wanted to just kinda give back and serve.
Thank you very much. We have a few questions for you.
Thank you so much for applying. Um, do you have experience serving on other boards and/or have you attended any planning commission or other town meetings?
So yes, I've served on a number of, uh, homeowners association design review boards over the years. Um, I was, um, also part of a homeowners association. Um, I was the president of a homeowners association for several years. So I've done that sort of thing. And involved at the town level yet, you know, that's why I'm here. Would like to get back and get, get in, get involved in this, in this aspect of the community. But, uh, yeah, definitely have spent time on some boards.
Hi Eric.
Thank you so much for applying. I appreciate that. Um, our planning commission meets on the first and third Tuesday of each month.
Yep.
Um, they start at five thirty. They can go four or five hours, uh, sometimes longer. Uh, we have voluntary trainings that we encourage, uh, planners to go do throughout the year. And the packets that you receive on a Thursday before your Tuesday meetings can go upwards of a hundred, a hundred and fifty, two hundred pages. Uh, knowing that, do you have the time and the bandwidth, uh, for this commitment?
Now, if the kids are on their way, I hope, hope to have more time. Yes, although twenty-two and twenty-four, you, you think they're fully launched, right? But they seem to keep coming back. But, uh, Dick knows all about that. We're on the same page there, right, Dick?
Yep.
No, I, no problem there. Absolutely. Good, good bedtime reading, right?
That's right. Hey Eric, thanks for applying. Good to see you. Um, do you have ties to the development community that you think may be perceived as a conflict of interest or any other conflicts?
Absolutely, absolutely do. Yeah. I mean, I've worked with a number of the builders and developers in town, architects and that sort of thing. So I think in those cases where there were a conflict of interest, it'd be important for me to, if there was something, you know, controversial with a certain project that, you know, I'd probably need to recuse myself from those discussions. But, uh, then again, I think that background and that, that experience is helpful in, in evaluating, you know, all aspects of it. The other thing I'd say is I'm, I'm very good at sort of taking a high-level look at things and, and, uh, you know, pulling my personal opinion out of it and looking at it, the collective, what's going to be best for our community. That's the bottom line.
Great. Thanks.
Thanks so much for your thoughtful responses.
Yep.
Um, we're done, but we're gonna make a decision tonight and staff will let you know what our final decision is.
Sounds great. Thank you guys.
Thanks for coming in.
See you guys.
Okay. We have one more thing on the agenda. Very important.
It's a fun one.
It is a fun one. Um, hold on, my computer has. All right. So, um, we have been wanting to recognize Eric, um, for quite some time. He, you know, I think everybody realizes that, um, because of what a quick transition it was, that we didn't really get to say thank you or really recognize all that he's given to the community here. And so we, um, as a council, thought this was a very appropriate award for him. And Jay helped kind of spearhead this. So I'll let you maybe say a couple of things.
Sure. Thank you, Kelly. You know, the, one of the things in the, um, in the, you know, one pager you got on the community leadership award, um, it's not an annual thing that we have to find somebody. It's, is it, it's as it comes to us or as, uh, it's deserved. And, you know, looking at the criteria that is set forth and that on service, you know, you look at the twenty-eight years that he has, uh, spent serving the town of Breckenridge. And now he's still going on as a partner at the county. Um, you look at the, uh, contributions and courageous efforts criteria. And that is clearly stated in the memo or, or in the, um, nomination that was, uh, put forth. You, you look at the civic leadership, the time invested, the stewardship of our community. And holy cow, does he epitomize each and every one of those. Um, I think that he's an example to be, to follow. He's been a leader. Um, he has heard, uh, without interruption, those around him. Uh, he's been passionate, uh, on his positions, but has supported the majority even when he's, uh, has lost. He's been very forward-thinking with the water plan and the workforce housing, you know, helping, uh, work with the town for fifteen hundred units in five years. Has also been on the, you know, the, the spectrum of, well, he hasn't been on the spectrum. He's been on the side of protecting the golden goose of smaller buildings, less density, you know, and really preserving the community. And whether that's, um, has been in the popular portion or not, he's stayed true to that. He's self-proclaimed being on the wrong side of many arguments. You know, notoriously talks about how he was against expanding Highway Nine to four lanes. That he was against the Peak Six expansion. I think, I believe he even said that the gondola, right? Like he didn't even want. And, and I always think about how humble he is by what he says is his biggest accomplishments. And that was painting the Riverwalk Center and the Rec Center, uh, expansions, which both great arguably, but far from his best accomplishments. Um, and then of course you look at the House Bill twenty-three, two thirteen that he was, he really became on the state and even the national stage with his, uh, voice on that. Uh, for all those and many, many more reasons, I think that, uh, he is well-deserving of this award and, um, yeah.
So we just need to decide as a council if we're, um, in agreement to bestow the nominee with the award. You have to stand up and say no if you.
With the camera and microphone on you.
Yes, we agree. Okay.
Yes.
I also really want to thank Brooke. I think she did a beautiful job with this letter nomination. I mean, it was just really thoughtful and I think, um, you went above and beyond. So thank you for doing that for someone who's done that over and over for all of us. And so that decision being made, I think we're.
Do you want to be the one to reach out to Eric and?
Did anyone tell him already?
I did not say a word. I don't know if we told you.
I would love to.
That would be great. And then maybe you could see what would work for him for, um, meeting where we could.
How much lead time do you need for the, uh?
Uh, I think. A base. It, it's already made, um, pay in, in anticipation of an award. Um, got a lot of that piece already done.
I think we do it officially in council chambers, but could we do it, um, more informally at the town party in front of his peers, in front of the citizens?
Absolutely.
Not sure if I'm gonna be able to be there.
I'll make sure he's in town. I'll talk to him about that. I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, I mean, just to give him some more public recognition as well, because he's sure on it. Yeah.
Great. We have a few minutes. Do you want to go and do?
Yeah, it'd be great if you all want to do your report outs.
Great. Let's do here. Okay. Report of the mayor and council. Last and MMC. We did have mayors and managers, but I don't remember if there was too much new information that came out of them.
Not, no, I don't think so.
We have now met the, um, mayor from Blue River and he seems great. Um, and he's very interested in getting up to speed on what we've been doing in Breck, which could be just really interesting to kind of broaden that conversation wider along the Upper Blue Basin, I think. It's good. I think that's a good thing. Um, and then the county was supposed to go move forward with, um, that was another thing that we talked about with, um, Casey Throw. But I talked to Eric and they did not, so I'll have to follow up on that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, did you have anything else that you wanted?
Just pulling up my notes. So if I do, I will let you know.
Okay.
Casey Throw came in the agenda and was voted down or it just didn't come up?
It didn't. It was supposed to come up today in the agenda, but it didn't come up. So it hasn't been voted down and it sounds like there's support, but we just haven't, um, we haven't been able to move it forward.
Okay.
We did, well, we talked a lot about like state bills, but, um, luckily the, the new two thirteen, which was also grim, didn't pass. So, um, you know, some of those panicky conversations aren't really that applicable anymore. And then the school board gave us a big update on their bond measure, which they are hoping to move forward with. Um, and hopefully if you get the survey, make sure you fill it out because they're really looking at, they need to go forward with the bond. They have a lot of facilities that are currently in disrepair that, um, they need like probably to the tune of seventy million dollars. Um, and so that would be, that's, they're not even looking at seventy million dollars. It's for sure going to be more than that, but, um, that's certainly the thing that's kicking off the conversation. Um, Breck L. being one of those, facilities that needs a lot of help. But really everything is kind of in, you know, it's all, it was all built decades ago. So, um, that will kick off the conversation. And then there's been lots and lots of information about, um, I always want to call them continuing ed, but it's really like alternative pathways.
Yeah, CT, um, career tech.
Career tech pathways. Yeah. So there, the high school in particular is doing lots and of really great, um, different programs from bike tech to ski tech to, um, the tiny home. And so they want to broaden that, make it available to the snowy peaks kids. And also, um, just make it more available to kids because those classes are small. And, um, unfortunately, while everybody wants to take them, many kids graduate without being able to. So.
Yeah, they're hugely sought after.
Uh huh. And an interesting thing that came up today, um, is that Tony Bird was saying, he's a superintendent, um, that really they see an improvement in kids', um, suc- success in school. Obviously that's not surprising, but it makes it easier on teachers, easier to get kids in school, less behavior problems because they have so much hands-on stuff. Um, and that's what's really attracting kids to school. Not surprising, but just an interesting fact about the, you know, it's a support to teachers to have these additional programs.
Well, can we, can the town support that with internships in some of our public work departments or whatever in, in those fields?
Great question. And we are, um, they're already in the planning phase of doing that. And so thanks to Public Works, the, um, mechanics, right? I think program is being supported, but.
And some, some of our planning staff or, uh, building department staff are helping with teaching some of the, uh, carpentry classes, the tiny homes stuff. This is great.
And this tiny home isn't built to code for, um, Breck, but they're hoping that the next tiny home will be. And then it'd be really cool if we could figure out a way to put it in the community.
With Rick being the teacher, I bet it will be.
Yeah.
Um, you know, just a couple of other things from that meeting. The county is, um, still worried about the ballot initiatives around property tax for the fall. And what that, if, if they get on or if they put them on and they're voted in, what that actually means for funding for counties and special districts and things like that. So I think we need to keep an eye on those. And then, um, Tom Fisher gave an update on the progress, um, around discussions for our regional transit authority. Um, they're doing a white paper on why that would be important to us in this community. Um, there could be a rec path component or roadway component. So, um, I think there's a, a bit of excitement around the possibility of potentially putting one of those together and what that could mean. More to come on that.
Yeah. Great. Okay. I'm gonna move on. Um, I feel like open space is probably covered.
Um, just one tiny thing is that we are vetting some, uh, RFPs for the Trail and Signers Plan, uh, next week. And so we're, uh, excited to see what kind of interest we're in. Uh, there's a member, one of the members of, of, uh, BOSAC will be on with staff narrowing it down to, uh, about three or four, uh, applications.
And is the open house coming up?
Yes, and that's, I, that's why I keep down. Forgot to mention it earlier. Um, next Monday at five PM, Breck Nordic Center, we will have the Trails Open House, our annual open house.
That's great.
Yep.
Thank you very much. Monday. All right. Thank you. Um, the tourism office.
We did have a meeting. Um, we, um, unfortunately Meg and Wendy were term limited, so they are done. And Meg has served forever and Wendy's. Both have been really powerful forces. Uh, Bruce is also up, but he, he is gonna run again. He's gonna, he's gonna go again, which is great. I believe these two have accepted Tim West with Orvis, um, is gonna, is gonna go on the board. And Mary Booton, um, who was a forty-year PR professional with Coca-Cola. Fairly new to the community or second homeowner, fairly new full-time resident. Um, and, um, which, you know, isn't the typical candidate for this board, but her marketing experience is just enormous. And, and she and Lucy really hit it off. Lucy got a great sense that, that she really understood the community and, and will be a great, great asset to the board. So that was good. Um, Lucy also is, is very enthused with, with the, the number and quality of candidates for her, her open position. Um, that marketing position, which is a key position to the, um, to the organization. Um, let's see. Um, we talked a fair amount about, um, the Board of Directors Retreat that's, um, upcoming. And, uh, what we're gonna go over, which is great and, and some of the shifting and, um, and they're gonna bring that, I think. I think they're gonna do, I think some of them might come to our retreat as well and try to share some of that, some of the board. Um, yeah, that, that was probably a lot of it. We spent a lot of time on the retreat talking and planning for that, um, vetting, you know, is the three, three or to four percent room night growth target the right target, you know, and, and, um, you know, shifting gears to having a, a more welcoming to all, charge for the BTO where it's, it's a little more all-encompassing than just tourism, you know, around DEI and things like that. So, good discussion, good meeting.
Great. All right, history?
Yeah, we had a meeting last week. Um, good discussion around the, um, the grants for the historic sheds. Um, they just asked, the board asked that council considers possibly increasing the amount allocated per year if there's great demand to restore some of these sheds. Um, they also asked that we make sure that folks with like a lot of expertise, they cited Robin, uh, as one. Um, they chose to apply that they'd be able to work on their own property. Um, so those were two kinda maybe ways to improve, uh, the grant process there for the demolition by neglect, um, tied into, uh, your comments there, Dick. Um, we talked a little bit about accessibility. Um, and somebody brought up COTREX, I think it was Johanna, this app. And, and I don't know if there's an opportunity for open space to maybe connect with them and, and add in this layer where, um, and this might be useful at the welcome center, right? Where. this layer where, and this might be useful at the welcome center, right, where in Kotrex, if somebody, you could point them to like, hey, here's trails that have historical significance, or here's trails that have, you know, an art impact. And then also layering in accessibility as a kind of a trail selector opportunity, since we've got stuff out French Gulch. And then we also chat a little bit about capital. They're in discussion of possibly redoing the welcome center. Sounds like the dollar amount on that was around two million bucks. And then just a few other things they're working on, prioritizing their list for stabilizing more mine sites, just because they've got kind of the all-star team that is able to work on that and all this expertise. So they were talking about, just to throw them out there, the Lorium, Preston, Mountain Pride, Reliance Dredge. And then on the Lorium, they were curious if it makes sense to do a, a management plan for that, just given there's, it's kind of a trail nexus there. We've got the new parking coming in. There was discussion of maybe turning that meadow site into, you know, something that's ADA accessible. So some real unique opportunities up there that, you know, we might want to look at kind of, with a lot of different like players kind of involved, that maybe some, some site planning up the Lorium might make sense. So, yeah, really good meeting. Great board. Awesome.
Cool. CML Advisors?
We had our last meeting of the legislative cycle a couple of weeks ago and reviewed some bills. But now with the session closed, CML will be putting out a recap of all the bills, how they impact us. There's a recap, I think, on the same day of our retreat, but it'll be recorded. And Harrison's on the policy committee too, so I'm sure we'll get all those updates as we navigate them.
Yes. So just to add in, our committee will meet a couple more times. Officially, CML will publish a publication of the laws enacted. We're getting, they're trickling in some of them that have been signed and some are still waiting for the governor's signature. And we'll have to move towards what do we have to do to change practices.
Okay. All right, great. Social equity?
We have a meeting on Monday.
Arts and Culture Master Plan Steering Committee.
Um, we did, see, me, Tamara and Julia met and just went over timeline for the RFP. It was officially issued on May third. Any questions or clarifications from people who are interested in, in responding to our RFP are due by May twentieth, so in about a week. And then we'll be, we'll have three day, or staff will have three days to respond to those questions. And then proposals are all due on June tenth. And we are setting aside June twenty-fourth to do, you know, the same, pick three to four applicants and do them all in interviews on them all in the same day. And so, and we'll go from there. So hopefully by July fourth, we'll have a selection of who we're going to enroll with.
That's great.
Awesome.
Thank you, Julia. Shannon, anything else? Report of the town manager?
Um, so just a couple of things. Rick and I met last week with two folks from the Kentrow Group and two folks from Kroger to talk just, well, to just get to know them, introduce ourselves and just kind of hear a little bit about what they might be thinking and talk a little bit about the town's character and the things that are important to us. We, it was a good meeting. You know, they, there's definitely a plan to have a new grocery store. So that's exciting, although we don't have details on that. And I think they're very early in any kind of planning for that. Most of the existing businesses have five-year leases. And so they have some time while they're, they're doing some planning. Hopefully they'll start to build something so that that's ready when they shut the, the existing store, but we don't know if they're going to do that yet or not. One of the other things that we talked to them about and they were open to is the potential to move the e-delivery to that site versus the Tiger dredge site. So Shannon Smith got some renderings done last week. We're going to share those with them and see what they think. But it was a great initial meeting. You know, for what it's worth, you know, they seemed to understand what we were talking about as far as the community goes. And, you know, I mean, it is, if you looked on their site, most of their stuff is not of the same style or character as what we have in our town, but they seemed to open to, you know, working, obviously they're going to need to work with our parameters, but I think they seemed to understand. And there, they do have a history, they said this, and I heard this from Jack Wolf, of doing community outreach before they do builds and development. So they, they said they plan on doing that. And I think it'll be a great opportunity for our community to talk to them and express what they feel like we need.
Wow. Public outreach for a grocery store.
I know, right? The only other thing I wanted to mention is we've been having some conversation at the managers' meetings around nicotine tax and how those tax funds are being used, not what comes into our budget and how we're using the dollars. But before it, I mean, it comes to us and then we pay out this in invoices, but before it comes to us, it's already sort of encumbered. And so since the tax was initiated, for, for those who don't know, a million dollars between all of the entities that are collecting tax, a million dollars has been set aside for FERC, Building Hope, and the care clinic. And that gets split up with five hundred thousand to FERC and two fifty each for the care clinic and Building Hope. And then there's, and that's part two dollars. Part one dollars is money that we contribute for programs. So cessation programs, youth prevention programs, assessment programs at the care clinic, additional programming and staff at the school district and in the health center, school-based health centers. And that number's been sort of creeping up every year. And there's been some concern on the part of, particularly on the other part of the other jurisdictions around that number continuing to grow. And last year, they came in with a one-point-five-million-dollar ask for programs and the managers said, you know, you're going to have to take a percentage cut off that. And they gave them one-point-three million dollars to spend. And so they worked within that budget. This year, the plan, I think this has already been communicated to youth and family who manages that, the programs and the, how the funding gets distributed, we limited them to a million dollars. And I think it's, personally, I think that's very, very reasonable. There's a lot of money going towards marketing. There's a lot of money going towards some different programs that maybe they can cut back on and show success for what they're getting the funding to provide. So I just wanted you to know that in case you hear from anyone that, that that's been cut back a bit for the, it will be for the 2025 year. But that's, we think that that's really reasonable and a responsible way to allocate those funds for that purpose. It's not going to make a huge difference for us in what comes into our coffers versus what we're spending out on those programs, but I just wanted you to have an awareness.
Tina, what are tobacco sales doing? Is this tax growing or, hopefully it's going down?
Yeah, I don't think it's going down. And I haven't, no, Dave shaking his head, no, I haven't looked at the numbers recently. Some of that, though, I'd have to go back and look because there was an escalator. So some of the, that may be as a result of the escalator. The, also the direction from the managers back to the youth and family folks is to really focus on youth, which was the original intent of the tax was to really reduce youth use of vaping products. So really want to focus on that and have them be able to show some, some results in that area. But no, unfortunately, the, I don't know how much of the use is decreasing.
According to today, the youth, at least if you look at surveys, the youth use has gone down.
Legitimate surveys, you think?
Yeah, they're state, I mean, they're state, yes, they're legitimate survey instruments, whether you believe them or not.
Yeah, I mean, it's the Colorado Healthy Kids Survey. I know how my kids took that survey when they were in high school. Yeah. But they're, I think they are, they do try to balance that with kids who really take it seriously, but.
Yeah. It's hard.
It is hard. It's hard to survey kids.
Especially about something like that.
Right. So, anyway, that's all I have.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Meeting adjourned.
Got to get them trained up.
Um, I'm going to call the town council regular meeting for Tuesday, May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. It is now seven P M. Call the meeting to order. You missed all that. Don't worry. Approval of the minutes?
I'm going to do roll call.
Oh, let's do that. We're going to start at the top with roll call. Please, Helen.
Dick Carlton.
Here.
Steve Gerard. Absent. Carol Sade.
Here.
Jay Beckerman.
Present.
Todd Rankin.
Here.
Mayor Kelly Owens.
Here. All right. Now we're going to do approval of the minutes. Town Council minutes for April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. Any revisions necessary? All right. Minutes are approved. Approval of the agenda. Shannon?
No changes.
Great. Okay, we're going to move into communications to council. These are public comment, non-agenda items only. You'll have a three-minute time limit. I'm going to open public comment and seeing none. Public comment is closed. We are moving into the Building Safety Month proclamation. Whereas our town is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and essential role of our homes, buildings, and infrastructure play both in everyday life and when disasters strike. And whereas our confidence in the resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas these guardians are dedicated members of the International Code Council, a nonprofit that brings together local, state, territorial, tribal, and federal officials who are experts in the built environment to create and implement the highest quality codes to protect us in the building, where in the buildings where we live, learn, work, and play. And whereas these modern building codes include safeguards to protect the public from hazards such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildland fires, floods, and earthquakes. And whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown protectors of public safety, our local code officials who assure us of safe, sustainable, and affordable buildings that are essential to our prosperity. And whereas Mission Possible, the theme for the Building Safety Month 2024, encourages us all to raise awareness about building safety on a personal, local, and global scale. And whereas each year, in observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider the commitments to improve building safety, resilience, and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now I, now therefore I, Kelly Owens, Mayor Breckenridge, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2024 as Building Safety Month. Accordingly, I encourage our citizens to join us as we participate in Building Safety Month activities. Adopted May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. Okay. Continued business. Uh, we don't have any. No second readings, so we're going to move on to new business. First reading of council bill series 2024. Council Bill number fourteen, series 2024, a bill for an ordinance approving the Soul Center roof lease between the town of Breckenridge and the Family Intercultural Resource Center. FERC.
Mayor Owens and council, we, before you, is a first reading of a lease for the roof of the Soul Center in order to put a PV, a solar photovoltaic system on that roof. And as, as per the grant from DOLA, we need a period of ten years to own, own the roof on which it sits, or at least lease that. And so that's a first, first reading before you for your approval. I'm happy to answer any questions if I can.
Great. Any questions to staff? No, seeing none. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Can I have a motion?
I move that we, that we pass Council Bill number fourteen, series 2024, as the title's been read into the record.
Second.
Any further discussion? Paul, please, Helen.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes. All right, resolutions. A resolution 2024. Resolution number twelve, series 2024, a resolution authorizing the execution and recording of Density Sunset Covenant. Mark?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The resolution in front of you will extinguish about ninety-eight SFEs of density from the, that are existing on the rodeo grounds slash ice arena property. And that will account for the density that is being constructed currently at Vista Verde Two.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mark? All right, any comments from the public on resolution number twelve? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Can I have a motion?
Can. I move that we pass resolution number twelve, series 2024, the title of which has been read into the record.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Helen.
Member Beckerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
All right. Moving on to, I have to catch up because we, well, I guess we're on Planning Commission decisions. Any call-ups tonight? No? Good. Great job. All right, we already did report of the town manager and staff as well as.
The Planning Commission appointment. We added that late.
That's right.
Oh, yeah, we got both.
I also got a vote.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Helen. A reminder.
Thank you.
I'm a goal follower.
Jake, any boldness?
No, I was doing one of these.
Jake, can you clarify that one for me?
Oh, really?
It's written in code. It's written in code.
Okay, there were four places to put it. How hard was that?
Outside the margins, apparently.
Color inside the lines. Still hear that from my childhood.
Oh, that's fine. It's on the hard copy, not the. Okay.
First, we have been doing that, Jeffrey making moves.
So Carol emailed her. Vote, which I'll share with Helen for the public record, but we have five votes for Keely Ambrose and one vote for Ann Branford. Bradford, sorry.
Great. So Keely, all the people who applied will be notified and Keely got it. I just want to say, and I think that it's unanimous, that this was a very strong pool of candidates and we really hope that they apply again. Because we would love to have them be involved in the community in this way, but we're happy to welcome Keely. She has a lot of great experience, so I think she'll be a great asset. Okay. Now, other matters. Anybody have any? Todd's checking his notes. Standby.
Oh, wait. Thanks.
Oh. Good, that was a good buildup though. All right, meeting adjourned. Is it a record?